The Manhattan City Commission to Order, just this is a work session. I'd like to remind everybody that we, this is a revision because we've added a fourth item. Item number four is Discussion of Senate Bill 190, and we'll explain that as we get to that item on the agenda. If everyone would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll start with item one, which is the 2019 first quarter report for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Are you doing this, Karen, you and, okay, both of you, good. Make sure you're, I got your mic on here, so hopefully it's working.
Test, test.
Good evening, Commissioners, city staff. How are you guys doing tonight? Thanks again for hosting us. Good or bad, this will be my last year on the Steering Committee. I hope that's not what has caused any of you to maybe not rerun again. I don't know if you guys caught wind of that, and so if that's it, I apologize. Appreciate you guys hosting us again tonight. We are pleased to present first quarter and kind of a wrap-up of 2018 to you. Again, my name is Ben Segal, I'll be doing this with Karen. 2019 has already brought several changes to our office. We are pleased to welcome Jason Smith, as most of you have met or been aware of, that he has joined the Chamber now as our new CEO. Jason's experience has allowed him to work with several CVBs across the country, each with the same challenge of marketing their communities as well. Some of the highlights of 2018 that we'll get into, but personally, I'll just give you a few of mine, and I'm a little partial, as most of you guys know. I'm, I put on a lot of races here in town, and we had, what I would say is a good year this last year, we had the Bill Snyder, which hosted about 1,500 runners, and, and I think, if I remember from, from what the numbers were, right, you know, five to 600 of those people indicated that they stayed in hotels, which is something that we always try to gather from that. We also hosted the first, or the inaugural Bleeding Kansas Bike Race, which had about 120 competitors, which was not a bad number for a first year, and we're already getting registrations, and we anticipate between 200 and 300 this year, hopefully. And those events are, again, events that bring in outside people. And then another first-year event that, that went off very well, had about 850 people, was our Little Apple Marathon that was out at, at the State Park, and again, once again, brought in, I think we had over 30 states represented for that event, and again, we're going to host that again this year. And so as we look forward to 2019, I just kind of reflect on that and realize that we've, Manhattan's got a lot going for it, and we really host, enjoy hosting those events. We also are very fortunate to have a solid Visit Manhattan staff. We've got Tony Ballard from the Convention of Sales, Marsha Rozell, which is in charge of sports and leisure, of course, our Director Karen, and new to the team is Anna Kozak, our Service Coordinator, and our Communications Teams are, is Deena Huff, the Director, Michael Goins is our Communications Coordinator, and Maggie Denon, who's our Social Media Specialist. First slide I'd like to bring your attention to is that in 2018, we had 353,518 visitors. Total visitor spending on that was just over, just under $176 million of revenue generated. Tourism works for Manhattan. Here on this, on this graph is the Tourism Economics Report, conducted by the Oxford Economics Company, was received at the end of January 2019 reflecting Manhattan's performance. Visitor spending in Riley County was $168 million in 2017. This reflects nearly 20% increase over the previous three years, and you can see by the chart the different percentages in each area, Recreation, Retail, Food and Beverage, Lodging, Transportation, and Second Homes.
We're going to tag-team a little bit on this, and again, when you look at those numbers, this report does reflect 2017, but I think you will, the reason that we're sharing it with you now, we just received that information at the first of the year in January of 19. But what that shows is exactly as our research shows as well, is why people come into our community. They come to enjoy our dining, followed by our lodging and our retail, then that transportation and recreation. And for the second year in a row, as you can see, Second Homes has shown up. That's reflective of our community as well, when we look at those Second Homes that people are choosing to come and retire in the Flint Hills, that reflects well. And so as Ben is sharing with you, tourism works for Manhattan, it really does make a difference, and that's backed up with the research that has been done for us by Oxford Economics.
According to the Tourism Economics Report, 2.5% of Kansas visitors' spending is done in Manhattan. 1,865 jobs were supported by visitor spending, which equals 8.5% of all jobs in Riley County. And in 2017, Riley County unemployment was 3%. If tourism were to go away, Riley County unemployment would jump to over 10%. Visitor spending growth has outperformed the state of Kansas the past three years, growing by 19.4% versus a state growth of 7.9%. Matt?
So our best month in 2018 was October, as this photo reflects. Much of that was because of football. Our hotel occupancy was at 65%, with average daily rate of $138, and the revenue per room was $65.21. When we bear that down, though, and look at the best month, best week, let's take a look at what the best week was.
March 4th through the 10th, with 80.9 occupancy, the average daily rate was $106.19, with a rev par of 85.95. That was, I believe, the 2A basketball, which then was also at the tail end of the St. Patrick's Day Road Race.
That would be correct, and it also, that week, also would, we would have hosted many conferences. So again, as that bears out with football in the fall, then conferences, and really the lifeblood of our community, conferences, special activities that happened. And again, this is all reflective of 2018. The best day, however, was?
September 29th, 2018, 96.8% occupancy, $193.99 average daily rate, and $187.87 for the revenue per room. That was a KSU versus Texas football game. That generally, that game, from what we've heard from the hoteliers, is always a big one for us.
Yeah, Texas travels, but also Kansas State fans come to support their Wildcats. And so again, we just found that interesting as we look and evaluate what last year reflected. We think that that's very interesting for the general public to know as well.
This chart is the monthly occupancy. I'll give you a second to look at it. This is over the last five years. As you guys know, in 2018, our inventory did decline. You can see that typically our lightest months are January and February. In 2018, those months were strong due to military training here in this area.
And also, as you see those purple lines on those charts, as Ben said, we had less hotel rooms because we had two hotels that closed. So the first four years reflect a little bit larger hotel inventory. The last year, 2018, and most of 2017 also reflected 1,237 sleeping rooms versus about a little over 1,400 sleeping rooms.
Some of our 2018 accomplishments, conferences in sports, had 187 conferences with 9,858 room nights, just under 41,000 attendees, an $18 million estimated economic impact in sports, were 47 sporting events, just under 1,500 room nights, over 15,000 participants, and just under $8 million of estimated economic impact. One thing to kind of keep in mind there is that comes out to be just under $26 million, or right at that, which, as you guys know, with our budget being just a little over $1 million, that's a pretty good return on investment.
Absolutely.
Flint Hills Discovery Center welcomes nearly 70,000 visitors per year, with nearly half a million visitors enjoying the Flint Hills Discovery Center in some fashion since the opening in 2012. Kicker Country Stampede, over 90,000 fans, over $8 million in economic impact, and coming back again this year, obviously. The Bill Snyder half, we had a little over 1,500 runners last year, which was down for us. What I didn't mention in our, in my opening was that, at this point right now, with a little over a month to go, we already are 30% ahead of where we were last year, and we have just under 1,500 already signed up. I'm anticipating somewhere between 1,900 and 2,000 this year, which would be our biggest one yet. With the finish being on the field, it's garnered a lot of attention, and there's a lot of people really excited about that. 2018 Little Apple Paddle encourages outdoor enthusiasts to get out, out and onto the Kansas River with 125 paddlers this past year, great organizers. This event will continue to grow. As I mentioned before, this last year was the inaugural Bleeding Kansas Gravel Duro. We had about 120 participants. We had both 50-mile and 100-mile option for that race, and it's, like I said, we're already getting registration for this next year. One exciting thing is the Dirty Kanza, which is a huge event, obviously down in Poria. They've had as many as 2,500 people in the past. There are actually already over 3,200 people signed up for this year. They have a women's training camp, and they will be bringing their participants for that women's training camp, which is about 50 women up to participate in this, so that'll be in addition to any other registrations we already get as well. So that's a great partnership we have with them. And then obviously, the 2018 Festival of Lights, it was beautiful this year, continues to grow and puts Manhattan on the map, from the lighting of the tree to the dropping of the ball, locals and visitors alike come out and enjoy Manhattan during that time of year.
So now it's time for 2019, the first quarter report as to how, how well we're doing.
The Steering Committee members represent the hospitality industry, just as the Tourism Economics Report broke out, lodging, dining, shopping, transportation attractions, our Steering Committee represents as well. And yes, change is constant. We started out with this membership at the first of the year, but due to some job changes, Scott Garrett just recently took an AD position elsewhere, and will be stepping off, and Lynn Gentin with the Midwest Dream Car Collection also will be leaving the committee. During the, during our second quarter presentation, we will introduce you to our new committee members.
So first quarter conferences. Obviously, the first quarter, as you looked at the monthly occupancy, that's always a little slow start to Manhattan, but that changes dramatically during the month of April and on. So during the first quarter, we've hosted 24 meetings, representing three, a little over 3,000 room nights, with over 4,000 attendees, generating over $2 million in estimated economic impact. One of the conferences that was different and new to our conference inventory this year was the DECA Conference. That was a conference that we brought to Manhattan from the Kansas City area. High school students, over 900 of them, came and competed. We loved hosting that for two reasons. One, they put heads in beds. Two, that they utilized the university facilities, the competition was held on the KSU campus at the Student Union, as well as the fact that there were over 100 local judges that judged that competition. Possibly you all were a part of that, and if you were, we thank you for that. But the commitment from the community, as well as the responses from the schools of meeting here in Manhattan rather than in the Kansas City area was good. We look forward to hosting that again next year. That actually was during the first part of the week that we would have hosted 2A State Basketball. So as conferences ebb and flow, different events ebb and flow, this helped fill the gap just a little bit. One of the things that we have been doing is we're always looking forward to different opportunities in which to attract new people into our community. We have been, become very involved in the Professional Conference Management Association, PCMA. That is, in Kansas City, we sponsored an evening to expose Manhattan to PCMA. There were 125 attendees with 175 membership, so 175 new potential meeting planners being exposed to Manhattan is a great way for us to tell that story at the International Continental Hotel in Kansas City. We believe that with our involvement in there, we will see that opportunity to continue to develop relationships and expose people to Manhattan, Kansas. First quarter sports, again, we had a long winter, in case you have quickly forgotten how cold and long it was. That's usually slow, five sporting events, 122 room nights, a little over 1,400 participants with that, with an $83 million, or $83,000 estimated economic impact with that. We had women's bowling, as well as the St. Patrick's Day race, and then some youth sports with basketball. We thought it was interesting for us to look, who inquires about Manhattan? From this heat map, this is where our inquiries came in 2018, as those folks were planning trips into Manhattan into the future, into 19. So you can see, those participants, it's hard for us to tell, are they KSU grads, families? Are they military families? Are they families that had once lived in Manhattan and are thinking about coming back? We just find that very, very interesting, with most of our concentration being more in the eastern part of the United States, but certainly a splattering along the west coast as well. So we thought you would enjoy seeing that. Our Facebook followers continue to grow. As you can see, it's very interesting to us also to see, obviously, that commitment with it being heavily in the United States, that is as you would expect. Again, our speculation, when you look at around the world, literally, Facebook and social media truly has changed the way that we have to market and the story that we have to tell, because our eyes, many people are looking as to what is happening in Manhattan. One of the best things about social media is you can actually monitor that growth. As you see, our, we've had a steady increase during that first quarter. We've experienced about a 10% growth since in the past three months above. We've also seen an increase in engagements with our target audience of potential visitors, which allows us to increase our potential reach as well. Our likes have also seen a steady increase, and we will see that only continuing to go up once that, you can see the dramatic difference from January through March. Activities will only continue to improve. And then, of course, the impressions are the number of times your content is displayed, no matter if it was clicked or not. We've had an average of 5,806 impressions per day over the course of the past few months, where we averaged just over 5,000 impressions per day previously. So again, that's improving greatly. And then what time of day are people on our Facebook? What time do you check your Facebook account? You can see that many times people are on there throughout the day, but it's very heavily our peak times are from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. Our most popular posts on, on Facebook, these posts combined reached over 17, almost 18,000 people. The post that we had about Manhattan's Happy New Year, that post received a lot of attention with over 46,000 people reached and 351 likes and comments. Manhattan's Liveability, being the 2019 Top 100 Places to Live, that post reached almost 8,400 people. It was liked and commented on 505 times. And the other post was Kansas State's post, who doesn't love a snowy day on campus, or in being glad that you're not walking to class on those kind of days, but that reached almost 4,800 people, and it was commented on 422 times. Then we had a fun partnership with McCain Auditorium in their performances. We did a ticket giveaway in which we asked people to post a picture of who they thought if their dog looked like their Bruiser Woods, who is Bruiser is Legally Blonde's character's dog. And so we had lots and lots and lots of posts with that. We actually, we reached over 10,000 people with that and had received 550 likes. The winner was a woman from two hours north and west from Manhattan, Kansas, or from Manhattan, Kansas, two hours north and west. Her name was Leanne DiGiulia, and her dog is the dog that won the contest, and it was also in celebration of her 70th birthday. So you're never too old to get on Facebook, to post your picture of your favorite friend, and come into Manhattan and enjoy a great evening. We also find it very interesting, I went back, let me go to this one. With Twitter, the Pete Souza Exhibition on display at the Beach Museum has gained a lot of attention for us. On any given day, Visit Manhattan tweets average anywhere between 3 and 12 likes. This tweet showcasing the Souza exhibit at the beach got 329 likes. It had over 30,000 impressions, 3,070 engagements, and 128 link clicks. In March, we've had 82,800 overall impressions for the month, and this is 200% more than our monthly average, with over 30,000 of those impressions coming from this specific tweet alone. We've seen a 5% increase in our Twitter followers, and we've also seen a 15.2% increase in our Instagram followers. Visit Manhattan continues to be foremost, as visitors come in and receive information different ways, but we have our new with the O-Manhattan and the placation, those different themes that are going on. As you travel into the state of Kansas at the Bell Plain and at the Goodland Entrance, you will see those, that signage that's on the left of this slide here, as well as the opportunity to pick up visitors' guides and direct them to our website to gain more information about Manhattan. Certainly, our STAR report, and again, I apologize, early information that you had received, that chart was incorrect. I had accidentally placed incorrect information, but in an effort to make that correct, I was also able to give you through March. So I'm going to give you that opportunity to review through March, how our performance is doing for our hotels. This first quarter is a bit down, as you can see. We're at 58.3% through the month of March versus the 61.2% that we were in March of last year. Our ADR still remains strong at 94.14 cents, and our revenue per room is down just a little bit at 54.85. Certainly, our supply of rooms is the same. Again, demand is down a little bit from where it was in 18, with our revenue being generated, again, just a little bit down from where it was in 18. Again, we're not alarmed, some of those things are, because things went away in 18, or in 19. As you know, we did not host 2A basketball this year, but we filled that with the DECA Conference. But as things come and go, you're going to see a fluctuation in some of our activity. Our hoteliers will tell you that they have had a soft first quarter. Our STAR report reflects that, that the first quarter has been down just a little bit. Certainly, we keep very prominent in our minds that our mission, mission statement is to do just exactly what it says, and that's to help expand the local area economy by attracting visitors. I've spent the bulk of my day today in Wichita. In the second quarter presentation, you'll hear more about it, but if you'll allow me, because it's fresh in my mind and I still have driving, driving bottom, I've spent the day today with the state of Kansas in Wichita, exposing Manhattan to travel writers from across not only Kansas, but across the Midwest region. Had the opportunity to talk with about 24 different travel writers that are looking for great stories. Certainly, as Ben was talking about, the activities, whether it is the Bill Snyder Race, the Festival of Lights, our dining, our shopping opportunities, what can I do that's unique and different in the Flint Hills? They all had questions about the Flint Hills Discovery Center and how do I begin my journey? They all had questions about the historical significance of this area with the trails that go to the north and to the south of us. It was a great opportunity to be able to promote our community and to tell that story, because when we have that opportunity to talk to those travel writers, they have the opportunity to attract visitors for us, basically do our mission statement for us. So, with this, this will be unveiled next month, in the month of May, and we think with it being the season for traveling, you'll be enticed to come to Manhattan. Very reflective of the conversations that I had today, each one of those items were things that they brought up without even seeing this video. So, thank you, Manhattan, for being a great community to promote. Who might have the first question for us from this presentation?
First off, thank you for all the work, as always, that you do to put in these presentations. They're always filled with so much detail, and I really appreciate that. Really early on in the presentation, visitor spending information with $168 million in 2017. I was curious, do, it says Riley County, would it include like a soldier from Fort Riley? Would that be considered a visitor if they came and spent money in Manhattan?
That's a great question, Commissioner, from that. This report shows all of Riley County. It also shows Potawatomi County, it shows Geary County. So, obviously, we're reporting on what spending is in Riley County. So, that is what is difficult about tracking visitor spending. If you have a family member that lives in Logan County in western Kansas, they would be considered a visitor because they're spending their money in Riley County. So, this is visitor spend or dollars that are spent in Riley County.
One of the things, when I was thinking about this topic tonight, I actually, I follow all of your social media, and part of the reason why I do is because I actually find out what's going on in Manhattan, a lot of times living in Manhattan from your social media. And so, sometimes when I Uber drive, and I'll Uber drive a soldier, they'll, I'll talk to him about Manhattan, and he'll be like, "Oh, there's nothing that goes on here." And I'll tell him about all of these things, and I'll be like, "Well, where do you find information like that?" I usually direct him to you.
Thank you.
Mostly because I'm like, "Well, that's where I watch for everything." I think it's a consolidated way. But when you do like your targeting on like your Facebook, social media, are we really only targeting outside of Manhattan?
Yes.
Predominantly? And again, does Fort Riley in your terms count as outside of Manhattan?
I know, don't, like, no, Maggie's not here, she could answer that directly. The short answer is, when we really first started our social media and concentrating on that, we were surprised as to how many of our locals, like you, are using our social media. So, our outreach now, we really want to target, just as our marketing always should be, if we attract and target people that are 60 miles out or more, the likelihood of them spending the night, staying longer, is greater. So, really, those efforts, so it's kind of, social media, as you well know, is one of those real phenomenons of, we do use that locally to see what's going on, but how do we make that so it's more attractive for those visitors?
Yeah, just a thought I had, it probably doesn't quite fall onto your realm, but I think about that because a lot of those, some, I shouldn't say a lot, some of those soldiers will just rather, they just go to Kansas City.
Yes.
Then they spend their money there. So, almost makes me feel like we have almost this untapped market of visitors that live 15 miles away from us.
Yes.
And how they're included in this numbers. It'd be interesting to pan that out a little bit more.
And I would follow up with conversations that I had today, as we were sharing, as I was sharing with the travel writers of what our specifically kid-friendly activities were. Many of these travel writers are thinking about summertime. So, to tell them the story about our pools, about the lazy river, and what our cost is to enjoy our pools versus the Kansas City area, what a great treasure we have. Another surprise that they had, we were at the Tangania Park in Wichita in Goddard, which, you know, they have exotic animals. I cannot tell you how pleased they were to learn about Sunset Zoo, an AZA accredited zoo in Manhattan, Kansas. So, again, a very family-friendly venue for people to enjoy. Again, all of the offerings of, that Manhattan has that can draw and attract people are things that we need to continue to do a consistent and a better job on telling that story, because we don't want them to go on into Kansas City, we want them to stay here.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question about, well, first of all, you indicated social media and all the views and likes on Instagram, Twitter, as well as Facebook. How does that translate into visitation, people visiting? Because the numbers are down on the number of people that stayed in our hotels.
Commissioner, I think that that is a great question, and I think one thing that we have to, the way that we need to think about that is, social media is like traditional marketing is. If you saw an ad on television, or you saw an ad on, in a publication that you maybe were reading, it plants a seed in your mind, and social media, you can see it over and over and over again. So, we don't, we cannot tell you that after they saw a post, after they saw a tweet from us, or they were on our Facebook, that immediately that next week they were here in Manhattan. What we have to keep in mind is, that's an investment that's being made for future. It's to entice them to come. If they're seeing that there's a McCain performance, or that there's a football weekend, or there's a race that's happening, it's enticing them that maybe they would have to plan in order to come to participate, or in order to plan to maybe not be there when that special event is happening. But it's difficult for us to say, as a result of seeing something on our social media, that immediately they're coming and staying in our hotels.
And the reason I ask that is, I can understand with a race, it might be different, because you're actually, people that are interested in a run or a walk are probably seeing it and are going to go to register, and you can see that because that link is there, therefore they go and register. Whereas something like a, like the tweets you said, or the Instagram posts about Legally Blonde and the dog, and how much attraction that had, that's harder to translate into if they came or what they did, because there isn't a link to see if they had to purchase a ticket, or if they had to do something, whereas it's different with an event. So, I just want to see how each of the items in the past few years, has that increased our demand for our rooms or for coming to Manhattan? Because sometimes, social media is just a very lethargic way to be socially engaged without ever having to leave your room, and making it seem like you're pretty cool. So, I just want to make sure it translates into dollars.
Yeah, I would echo that as well with, just me, from a business owner standpoint too, we use social media a lot for the stuff we do, and it's hard, I mean, advertising can be one of the most frustrating things that you do as a business owner, because I don't know that person unless you polled every single person, "Why did you come? Why did you, why are you here?" It's hard to know. We're working with some social media stuff now where we're going to be able to actually, if they saw the post and they made a purchase through our point-of-sale system, we'll be able to see that, and now we'll be able to know that because of some stuff we're doing. But it's very difficult for the CVB to do that, because it's not like they stop by the CVB and make a purchase, and so you can say, "Okay, this person saw that post, now they've made a purchase," just because they don't have that data to do. So, it is, it's just one of those frustrating things with marketing, it's always got to be top-of-mind presence, that's why you have to advertise, you cannot stop, that's why the CVB is so important to what goes on here in Manhattan, because if you lose that top-of-mind presence, then people are going to stop coming.
And I'm not suggesting I'm anti-social media.
No, no, absolutely.
Yeah, I understand how it translates to business. I want to see how you track that, so that, one of the things I want us to step away from is doing the same thing over and over again.
Sure.
Unless you can translate it somehow. So, I don't know how you capture that. I don't, I'm not, I know I don't go to the professional developments in that area, but maybe that's something to look into. How do you translate views and watches and all of this? How do you know that there's progress being made? Because if we're giving over a million dollars to CVB and there's, we're down 300,000 from last year for the past three months, or whatever it might be, that's a concern to me. So, I just want to make sure that we are, it's hard to manage and see with your budgets how that money is spent and how it is coming in. So, it's good to see the views and in social media, but when we're looking at hotels and with fewer rooms, with having 1,237 rooms, that just makes a difference, although the revenue is up from 2017.
Right.
But it's down from, about 300,000 from last year. So, I just want to see, like, how do you, how do you improve that, or what is missing? Like, I understand the basketball tournament that we didn't have here, and how much of an impact loss I can understand, but how do we gain some of that revenue back? It couldn't be all 300,000 just from that one sport. It could be, I don't know.
No, and keep in mind, we also, last year, first quarter, remember, we had extended military stay for training, and so we had two things that, if you're comparing 18 and 17, 18 and 19, just 18 and 19 alone, we've had two major things that didn't happen this year. So, we have three more quarters to see what is coming on, we've got some significant events that will be happening. I'm not, I'm not worried, we are aware, but for us to quit marketing and not being, your question is very valid, we will go back and evaluate that and see, but I'm not worried that people are not coming to Manhattan, it's just giving them reasons to come to Manhattan.
And I, yeah, and I am worried that they might not be coming. I am truly worried, because there are so many options out there for people.
Right.
So, that is a concern to me. When we talk about revenue sources for the city of Manhattan, and we have property taxes, and transient guest tax, and sales tax, sales tax is a huge component of it. So, I would love to see people just come to Manhattan, enjoy it, love it, and then go home. And I would love to see that constantly, and that is what CVB does, is promote all of the tourism that we have. So, certainly, we would like to help you in any way possible, and also look at how some of those initiatives that you're doing, how can we promote it on our end? Because that is an investment in our community, and we want to see that, keep it growing. And you're doing a fabulous job with what we have, but Manhattan, you know, trying to sell Manhattan and being ambassadors for Manhattan falls on all our shoulders. So, thank you.
That's right, thanks.
Yeah, just, I think, you know, you've got really great, you know, data on rooms, I guess that's easy to collect, you know, so you can, you can draw correlation there. But as I've said before, maybe, you know, your one slide here shows the 26 to 1 return, you know, estimated 26 million, but can you correlate that to tax receipts, sales tax? Because to me, that goes along with what Commissioner Reddy said, we do all these things, and you can capture some of it in rooms, but can you somehow or other chart that or correlate it to the sales tax receipts? I know that's tough, because they come in a couple months behind and things like that, so I know that's not an easy thing to throw out there, it's, you can't magically make it happen. But it would be interesting to see if the events that you have have an impact on that that we could actually measure. And then, that would be an interesting thing to put in here, instead of saying, "Well, we estimate it," you can say, "Well, this chart indicates that we had a big influence on that." And if, you know, special events or things like that, are there things that spike it? And it'd be interesting to just give that a shot. I know that would be hard to do.
It is hard to do, Bernie, and I've had that conversation many times, as well as, and I know that that's something that we'd all like to go, can we, can we see that spike? One of the things, not a quick answer, but again, we are investing in this year, surveying our visitors. That takes a long time in which to do that, but for the first three months, that's already being done, and we are seeing that that visitor's spend, when we ask specifically our visitors that are staying in our hotels, what they're spending, that visitor's spend is up, where we actually are saying, "How much did you spend on your room? How much did you spend on dining? How much did you spend on, did you go to any of our attractions, and if so, what was that spend?" So, that authentic one-on-one conversation that we are having with our surveyors is very helpful, but it takes a long time for that to be gathered, for us to be efficient. But I know that's a desire you would love to have.
Yeah, but you could start with something just simple, say, you know, a trend chart with just a line that shows the sales tax information that Bernie's got, and then draw your rooms underneath that, and then draw your investment of how you spend the million dollars. I mean, that'd be three lines, it would be easy to do, and then you'd be making some assumptions on how the two interact, but that would be a starting point, I think.
Want a date, Bernie? Okay. Other questions?
I would just like to say, today I attended the National Association of Housing Resource Officers, those directors and staff from public housing authorities all over Kansas at the convention center. And it worked out really well with all of the rooms that they have for the workshops, and I was pleased that everything went well, and it was delightful. In the past, I've asked you, and I probably, you probably get tired of me asking, but I am always interested in you combining your conference event numbers with K-State's conference event numbers. Is the 187 both, or is it just the chamber count?
Those are just the, those are just our groups that we specifically have worked with. So, if there is a group that comes in and goes through Global Campus and doesn't use our services, we do not count those. So, I don't ever want the, you or the general public to think that there were only 187 conferences held in Manhattan in 18. So, those are just the groups that we have touched in one way or another.
I, thank you. I just needed to know if, because I'm hoping that someday we'll hear the numbers 350, because we add them together, because that's what's happening in our community. It's not just which half of, which organization is facilitating or working with that conference, it's the bigger picture that is important for us to see too, although our investment is in the CVB in the chamber. I'm pleased with this report. I think, you know, there is, as Yusha mentioned, some, you know, reservations about the rest of the year, but, so for January through March, the first quarter, we are in good shape, I think, and so, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we have Region Reimagine, our favorite topics.
Well, perfect, I love to hear that. It's great.
I think most people know you, Christopher.
Well, perfect, so, good evening, Mayor and City Commission, city staff. I, over the last six months, I've officially been here six months, and so, I apologize, this is the first time I'm speaking to y'all in a formal sense, but I have been working with most everyone, almost in this room, on a lot of different initiatives that Region Reimagine had launched. So, this evening, I'm going to go through and talk about where we've been, kind of where we're going, in the planning and implementation process, as well as updates of what's been happening, both inside and outside of the workgroup discussions, and then provide a summary of some of the key things that I've been hearing in my listening tour. So, for purposes of the public and everyone viewing tonight, I just wanted to give a quick summary of what Region Reimagine is. It is a community and economic development, planning and implementation effort that is working with Geary County, Potawatomi County, and Riley County, using a holistic approach to then identify, how do we coordinate and leverage resources where possible, with both existing efforts, but then also identify where those gaps are, and figure out of those gaps, what are some of the things that we need to be focused on so that we are prosperous into the future? So, where we've been, and I did want to make a notation, I added, I believe, three slides from the version that you received. So, where we've been, the Region Reimagine folded out of the Greater Manhattan Project, where there were visionaries right here on the commission that helped to get that started. And it was really looking at that holistic approach, but identifying what, where are the trends going? What's that community assessment? What are some of the things that we need to be looking at holistically, that we should be really kind of the movers and shakers to move the needle the other way? If there's trends that we see that we don't necessarily like, like migration of the population outside of the state, for example, what are some things that we can do to turn that around? So, the essence behind Region Reimagine is to focus truly on talent, probably more than any other component, but what are the other components that go along with the ability to attract talent? the ability to attract talent that will help us on that journey? So the Market Street Services produced the Greater Manhattan Project Plan. There were four different key documents as a part of that. And Market Street had recommended that we go through kind of a pre-implementation period. And in that period, it was really to get organized, to set up the structure to where it's going to be successful into the future. So the plan, the implementation plan had been adopted in January of 2018. And then throughout 2018, there was a group of wonderful volunteers that were super motivated and did some really good work to set up not only an implementation committee to then help make decisions, but also the identify, out of the study, what are the key focus areas that we should really drill down to and focus on? And so that has been done. The key areas are talent attraction and retention, entrepreneurship and innovation, quality of place, built environment, and advocacy. So I get a lot of questions about what is the difference between quality of place and built environment? And so just for clarifications, my background is in urban planning. And so I view that as one and the same thing. But for purposes of Region Reimagine, just think of it as what are the fundamental built environment components? Housing, transportation. It may include utility-type information, infrastructure, like fiber, our fiber network, those kind of things. Whereas quality of place is almost like the icing on the top. What are the things that are here in Manhattan that make Manhattan special? And are there places, often referred to as placemaking, whether it's on the corner of a downtown block or a city park, that we can take and make improvements to encourage tourists and members of the community to get out and enjoy the community even more as a retention tool? So those are the five key areas that were identified within this pre-implementation period. Each of the workgroups were asked to develop purpose statements. There were infographics based on the conversations of what are the key things that we're hearing and that both came out of the plan, components of the plan, as well as conversations that we've had throughout 2018. The workgroups have reviewed the tactics. And with a rebranding strategy, taking it from the Greater Manhattan Project to Region Reimagine, there has been a great effort over the last few months to make sure that we're building relationships with those, with additional people in Potawatomi County and Geary County, and even additional relationships here in Manhattan. Who are the key people, in Riley County too, but who are the key people that need to be at the table to have these conversations? And are there common threads in each community? Or maybe just two communities? Or are there things that we need to, that have a great enough impact that we need to be focused on even in just one community? So we've had, we've led a series of focused discussions over the last several months. We launched, well, and then a part of it was, I was hired, so that's great. I'm happy to be here. And then we had, through the Leaders Retreat in 2019, in January, we had a call to action. It wasn't a full-blown rollout of the plan, but it was a call to action. And what I challenged everyone that attended, there was 245 people that attended that Leaders Retreat in Olathe, Kansas. And of those, I challenged everyone there from all three counties to sign a banner agreeing to think regionally, to collaborate and work together on common issues that could be worked on together to resolve, or at least improve. And so we took that information from the Leaders Retreat. We went back to the workgroups because not everyone within the workgroups were able to attend that Leaders Retreat. And we had all the workgroups go through that same exercise. So now we have a 61-page document that's really good reading, nighttime reading material. And I'm not going to bore you with that. But I did want to take some highlights from this presentation to give you an idea of what some of that input had to say. And then we're going to do, we're going to take some of that input and the information from the Greater Manhattan Plan and enhance that foundation that has already been built. So this is a diagram that I've been drawing for lots of people ever since I arrived. That in my mind, Region Reimagine has the ability to identify what truly is regional versus what may just be a local issue. And then identifying what is important to each of the three counties. So we're going through a process to identify those. Are there gaps in which no one is working on? Or are there existing organizations that are already taking the lead and they're doing great and they really don't need help? Or are some of those organizations that have the lead and are working on things running into some barriers that we as a region should be looking at to see how can we help move past some of those barriers? So the key is, my role is not to duplicate or to take over any functions of any organization. My role is to get, be almost like that master coordinator, to get the right people in the room to identify what's important to everyone, what is truly a local issue versus a regional issue. And then try to identify what may be agreeable approaches on how to make progress. So with all of this information, we're going to take the Greater Manhattan Plan that still exists today, that's still valid, for any kind of budget planning decisions. I would use that document for that purpose. We will be providing that summary of the input that came out. As well as this presentation will help highlight some of those things as well. So of the workgroups that we already mentioned, advocacy is also another component of that. But we are building a structure, to put a structure in place so that we can vet any kind of advocacy issues in all three counties with the appropriate parties to say, okay, if all three counties are on board, or even a couple of counties or organizations are on board, then it may be an issue that, from a regional standpoint, there's power in numbers. So it may be something that we grab a hold of and move forward. So like I said, in the last six months, I've been working on building those relationships, collecting the input. I want you to think of the plan as a living document. So as we go through the process, there may be, it may continue to evolve, and we may continue to learn more things and add to it with the blessing of the structure that we're putting in place. And then presenting that to those groups for approval. And then develop a dashboard as part of the plan to see what are those measurable things that we can track ongoing to see how well we're making progress and keeping everyone in the loop as to what's happening. So my goal would be to have regular updates to you so that you have an opportunity to ask questions and provide your feedback as well. So with the Talent Attraction and Retention Group, I would say this is the core behind Region Reimagine. But all groups are very important. What we've been doing, the Greater Manhattan Project really looked at some of the biggest institutions. So Fort Riley and Kansas State University as the key institutions that will provide the biggest supply to feed that talent into the region. There are more, through technical colleges, community colleges throughout the region, as well as the USD system. But what, in order to take it to that next step, I wanted to make sure that we were really clear on what the demands are from each of the industries listed here. So healthcare, education, technology, manufacturing, construction, agriculture, and bioscience. So at the Leaders Retreat and through the workgroup discussions, we've asked key questions surrounding those industries to really identify, are there things that we can do through stackable curriculum, maybe through the USDs and Technical College and at the university level? Are there things when we have transitioning soldiers that are coming out and they're kind of in the pipeline? Are there things that we can work on to help get them placed into a job so that they can stay in our region? What are the challenges? And I feel that with every industry, there may be different challenges. Some of the things that we have discovered is that in the agriculture industry, we have a great pipeline produced out of Kansas State University and other institutions. But there's not as many jobs for them once they graduate to go to, so that they can stay. A lot of graduates do want to stay in this area, but the job opportunity isn't there. So attracting some different businesses to, and corporations to come into the region, may be something that we need to look at. With healthcare, education, technology, manufacturing, and construction, those, we have existing pipelines. But there could be things that we could do to improve those pipelines, to make them stronger at all levels of the education and training system. One of the things that I wanted the workgroup to do, I had them divide out by industry and sit at different tables representing their industry. And I wanted them to go through Department of Labor data, looking at salary information, comparing our Manhattan MSA compared to all the other MSAs in just the state of Kansas to say, okay, from a salary standpoint, how do we compare? Are we offering competitive salaries in each industry or not? So they might not have liked me that day, but I took them through, gave them a spreadsheet, showed them all job classification codes and said, here, take your highlighter and go through, identify all the jobs that pertain to this industry, and then look across to see how we're doing compared to the other MSAs in Kansas. And so that generated a lot of interesting conversation. I think that they were surprised. It's approximately 66% of all job classification codes where we are paying at average, and a lot of those at the lowest levels compared to the other MSAs. And so in order to be successful in attracting talent, what can we do to encourage businesses to ensure that they're paying competitive salaries? And I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if anyone does have the answer to that. But I think that it's something that we need to be aware of as we move forward. And then of the workgroup that we have in place, I challenged them. I said, think of all the people that you know in this industry and your network of professionals. Think of all three counties and make a list of all those that should be at the table to have this conversation. Because we don't want just one or two people to come up with additional information related to just one industry. So they made a list, thinking of all three counties. They put a star next to one to three people that could participate in leading discussions as it relates to that industry. So that we can really take the Greater Manhattan Plan from that 30,000-foot look at things to then what are the actionable things? To then work with all the different education groups, whether it's USD, Technical College, at the university level, to then say, okay, these are the things that the industries are saying. Here's the demands that they have. Now, what can we do from an education and training standpoint to make sure that we are helping with that, supplying that demand? One of the meetings that we had most recently is with Fort Riley, some Fort Riley support groups, as well as the chairs of the talent group. Mayor Dodson was there, it was a good meeting. What we really saw is that there are some communication gaps. I think that there are some more complex challenges that we need to get through, work through. But there are some simple things that we can do more immediately. So I think it was really eye-opening. I wanted the chairs to be there to hear what some of those challenges are in attracting those transitioning soldiers to the region and being able to have jobs and making the connections and networking with the connection between businesses and soldiers. So one of the things that we are working to do is to coordinate on a quarterly basis where the military liaisons in Manhattan, so Janet Nichols and Craig Bender from Junction City, get together and coordinate with the Membership Services Director of each chamber in Manhattan, in Junction City, and in Wamigo to then rewrite some of the information that comes out, but put it into one pager. So there's a lot of events that happen in communities. And then there are a lot of events and recruitment-type events that are happening on the base. As businesses, you get kind of bombarded with all these different events and all these different flyers. Well, how great would that be to have just consolidated on a quarterly basis? And with language that speaks to the businesses as to, why is it important for you to engage or maybe attend an event? What to expect? How many people should we anticipate for material purposes, those kind of things? The, I did want to highlight, last week, we had a Junction City Chamber hosted Hiring Vets is Good Business. And that is an excellent example of some of the connections and meetings that I've had with both Craig and Mitch Foley with the transitioning soldier program. To then, out of that meeting, they said, hey, you know what, Kristy? We need your help. I want you to help promote this event. And so Junction City opened it up for the entire region. We got it out from all the different chambers. I sent it out to all the Region Reimagine network. And I don't know the total number, but I did attend and it was an excellent training. So that was, I think, a great thing. Janet Nichols with the Manhattan Chamber is about to launch a program called Advice. It is a way, what we've been talking about, and there's been a lot of conversation about how to make connections with the business community to the soldiers and to create a good enough connection or partnership that the soldier and their families feel that this is their home. So she is launching a program on May 1st. So if anyone is interested in attending, you can register with the Military Relations Committee. It's going to be a luncheon. And you can learn more about that program that she will be working. That is a Manhattan program at this point, but it could grow potentially in the future. Soldiers for Life offers multiple opportunities, employer networking event where employers can go on base and meet with the soldiers and tell them about their job opportunities. Or if it's a company that has multiple, I would say five or more positions that they're hiring, they can even host their own program on base to then promote those positions on base. There's one more. Dr. Cheryl Grice has arranged a tour a while back that was with the Kansas Employment Exploration Program, where soldiers get on a bus and they go tour communities. And I thought, you know, what would be great is if we are able to capture in that and participate in that program and put on a regional tour. So Junction City, Manhattan, Wamigo, or name the place. But so those are things and conversations that we're going to be having. And so instead of, I mean, they will most likely still go in other places throughout Kansas. But we really need to be tapping into that. The Fort Riley also has been holding workshops called the Community Partnership Workshops that are identifying, what are some of the things? Because their budget is being reduced. Organizations throughout our regions, their budgets are being reduced. What are things that we can partner and save money on? So there's about five or six different groups with that. And I've been plugging into the education, healthcare, and recreation. So are there opportunities to host maybe some healthcare joint training opportunities? Instead of working in silos, are there things that we can partner as a region? Kansas State University Career Center, CAREY, is a part of our talent attraction and retention, which I think is critical. So there are career fairs that are happening both with Kansas Works and Fort Riley and Kansas State University. They're happening all over the place. But how do we get the word out about them? What I keep hearing is there's a lot of businesses that come from all over. But we don't have as much representation from our local businesses. So what can we do to promote those businesses to say, no, we need to have a seat at the table? If we're going to really recruit and retain students and soldiers and employees and residents here, everyone needs to know about these events. So the Career Center has agreed to allow me to help promote some of their events for them. So more to come on that. I did want to say, there is going to be an employer registration for the All-University Career Fair. for the All-University Career Fair this summer, from June through August. And then the event is going to be held September 24th through the 26th. And then, this is my last slide on talent, and then we're going to move on. But I've been participating in a lot of different organizations and ways to get the word out about Region Reimagine and how people can get involved. So whether it's Leadership Manhattan, tomorrow, the Flint Hills Regional Council is holding their conference in Junction City. So if you are able to go, please attend. I think that'll be an excellent event. The USDs have been working on multiple programs. One of the things that I wanted to point out, the Classroom to Career Program had 31 different classrooms participating, which are fourth-grade classrooms, participating in that program. The Work Keys Program has been expanding. Potawatomi County and Gary County have been participants in that. And now there's some additional funding that came through this last year. And so Riley County is participating in the Work Keys Program. Jobs for America's Graduates. That is a new program to Manhattan High School. And I've been meeting with Panji on that particular program and making the connection with Manhattan's Membership Services Director, Sharla, to then work through, how do we have a job shadowing program with those students and connect them with the businesses here in Manhattan? There's an apprenticeship career fair, May 1st, Young Professionals Summit. I'm going to be speaking at that on the May 10th. I think that's critical. The young professionals throughout the region have a very strong voice, but we need to get them engaged and participating even at a higher level than they are today. So whatever I can do to make that happen, we're going to get them engaged further in Region Reimagine activities. The Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation is putting together a Workforce Crisis Summit that's going to be held here in Manhattan on May 17th. I have also met with INBAF just last week. And they have a very large job fair that's going to happen June 4th and June 5th. And the reason why I mention that, well, it's important to Manhattan, but also what they're going to be able to hand out at that job fair is projections of the type of positions that they're hiring for now. They're going to be hiring about 100 positions between now and September. But then the type of positions that they anticipate hiring into the future. So I think that that will be an important event. In healthcare, there are multiple conversations and meetings that have been held. Bob Koppel is one of the chairs of the Talent Group, and he is doing some amazing work in the healthcare industry. That is one thing that we really need to hone in on from the demand in nursing and some other positions, that we need to make sure our healthcare industry is really strong here. And so there's a series of meetings that he has been involved in and hosting to get the ball rolling on those. So let's go to quality of place. I'm not going to spend as much time on the other three as talent, but I wanted to focus on talent because I think it's that important. So for quality of place, of the questions that were asked, there was a series of questions that were asked, both at the leaders' retreat and through the workgroups. We wanted to identify what were the most important places in your community and gather that information by county. So Riley County may have different thoughts on that than Gary County or Potawatomi County, but I wanted to see how that kind of fleshed out. So on this slide, of the things that are listed below, those are common themes that meant that comments were made from all three counties. If comments were not made from all three counties, it would not be appearing here. One of the questions was, what may be important to improve that would enhance the quality of place in your community or region as a whole? And you will see, as we go through these trails, walkable areas, outdoor recreation has been really the key thread throughout all of these discussions. But it was interesting that even though there were separate conversations and focus groups by geography, the common themes really were aligned from all three. Not a one-for-one, but they were pretty similar. There is an effort here in Manhattan to, there's a concept out there about what improvements could be made along the riverfront that would also help with flood protection. That's a concept at this stage. But because of that concept, I wanted to see, is that something that should be regional? Or is that a local issue? Is that something that may, kind of a visioning process? Who's interested in going through that visioning process of what that may look like in 10 to 20 years? I'm not sure 100% if that will come to fruition, but I'll tell you that all three counties had a desire to participate in that visioning process. What comes out at the end, as far as from a funding standpoint, that would obviously be up to each jurisdiction as to what they would want to implement, but at least let's see what's possible. And then the last question, if you had the ability to make one improvement that would benefit the three-county area, what would that be? And the consistent conversation was trails connecting the region. So whether that's trails or activities, events, what are things that can bring us together to promote activity and connections between communities? And then outdoor recreation, again, kept coming up. So I wanted to look at this in two different ways. Of the common themes that arose within all three counties, what was that frequency among those questions? Trails and outdoor recreation, followed by riverfront, followed by indoor recreation, performing arts and arts, specific destinations, so Aggieville, North Corridor, downtown areas, and then specific neighborhoods were listed in some of the input. And then, last but not least, parks and designated natural areas and community entrances. That's been a big topic in a lot of those conversations. What can we do to improve our community entrances so that you know that you've arrived to somewhere special when you arrive? And then the second way of looking at it is a prioritization process. So everyone went through a dot exercise with different weights and points given by each color. And the indoor recreation ended up being the most. And unfortunately, it's not showing up on the slide on the screen, but I hope it showed up in your handout possibly. There are some blue-shaded areas that identify what was the most important in Gary County versus Potawatomi and Riley, what the top three were. And then, in addition to each session, so there's five different sessions, that these topics could have come up. I gave everyone an opportunity, if there wasn't something from the common themes that we had heard in prior conversations, they had an opportunity to add new things to the list and go through that ranking process with those as well. One of the things, and the reason why I included this slide, is that childcare continues to be a very important topic in all three counties. It happens to be where Gary County is the only one that brought it up in this setting. And our talent work group is going to be the group that's handling or working towards that. But childcare happens to be one of those that I keep hearing comments about how people, especially in the smaller communities, are moving specifically because they don't have childcare options. So there's a lot of work that's been done in all three counties, including here in Riley County. And I've had meetings to learn more about those planning efforts, to see what those next steps are. It truly is a regional issue with a localized need. So innovation and entrepreneurship, there was a work group that met last fall. And they had a lot of really good input that came out of that process. But for simplicity purposes, if you could narrow that down, creating a culture of innovation throughout the region is the key initiative that we are going to be focusing on. And then, how do you create that culture of innovation through both the built environment, the partnerships that we have with research institutions, with K-State, with the entrepreneurial community, with transitioning soldiers that may have an interest in entrepreneurship, those types of things? So a couple of weeks ago, this group, and kind of an expanded group, met. And we went through an exercise that by county, everyone was identifying capabilities that we already have throughout the region by county and Kansas State University, and did some asset mapping. So we identified what are, as it relates to entrepreneurship. So what are the things that we already have that we can build from? One of the key things as well is to make sure that we're having those conversations in Potawatomi County and Gary County, and identify, of the framework that's been created, how does that apply in other areas outside of Manhattan? And everyone has a downtown, and so everyone has some opportunities and different hubs that have been identified, whether it's an industrial park or others, where businesses are doing some really innovative things. So let's identify those, map them out, and identify how can we better support those areas and grow on that culture of innovation? We're to this stage in innovation and entrepreneurship where we are going to get to the level of action-level kind of plans, folding that information into the strategic plan. And then, from a built environment standpoint, the two key things, this is kind of a busy slide, but the two key things that came out of the work group discussions is that housing is important to all three counties. And all three counties feel that we need to make improvements. Of the input that was collected, there were comments about, there's not enough land or availability is not present. And then, in contrast, in Junction City, we have an oversupply. So the work group had some discussions about where each community stands. They divided up by county to have their own independent conversations. And the conclusion was that, really, we have a lot of opinions, but we need more data. Data exists. Some data is a little bit dated and needs to be updated. And some data is pretty current. So when you look at the region as a whole, all three counties have completely different housing needs and challenges. And so what are some of the things that we can do as a region to help with that? So the work group unanimously voted that we should be exploring options to figure out how to get that more current data to then make really sound decisions as to what the next steps are. The Manhattan Draft CIP, I know, has a housing study. It was identified as a part of the Greater Manhattan Project Plan, that a housing study was needed from that plan, or maybe even before the City of Manhattan has had that line item in there. And so I'm really hopeful that there's support to move that forward from a marketing analysis standpoint. And then, one of the things that the work group is going to be working on is working with the NPO as a work group to then work through the long-range transportation planning process. I did want to mention, on May 4th, there is going to be a housing forum, a public forum that's open to the public. It's free to attend. And it's going to be in a café style, where multiple organizations that have an interest in housing here in Manhattan will have conversations about what that looks like and what's important, what's valued. So I encourage everyone to attend that event. Region Reimagine will have a table there, and we'll be participating and hearing some of those conversations to help guide us on our next steps. And last but not least, if we were to look at all the conditions of what we need to focus on to attract talent, I sum it up really in these six key areas. So encouraging competitive salaries, providing suitable housing, both for the current population, but the future population and planning for that. Better aligning talent supply and demand. I already touched on that. Creating safe childcare options. Continue the efforts to improve quality of place. And then, working to continue to improve those connections and coordination between students and soldiers in the community. With that, I open up for questions.
I'll start again. I'm always the first one.
That's perfect.
So I have a couple of questions/feedback. First, I just want to say how impressed I am with your leadership coming into a new community in the middle of such a big project. We've never done something like this before, and how you kind of pulled it all together. So I appreciate all the work that you've done, and the workshops that I have attended, I've been very impressed by. The first thing that I have is, one of the things that I'm kind of overall concerned about, I guess, is the pace in which all of this is moving. I know halfway through, there is a little bit of a realignment, but we started this process in January 2017. And I kind of feel like the information I'm hearing now is maybe more organized than the information I was hearing a year ago, but it's really not new information. So, I mean, over like the next year, over the next year or two, how do you see this playing out more long-term, into 2019 and into 2020?
Right. Okay, so, yeah, so the first, just for clarification purposes, you're right, July 17 is when the first series of documents came out. And then, the implementation plan was adopted in January of 2018. So the pre-implementation period that was recommended by Market Street was, I'm pretty impressed, because it was just volunteers that were putting together that structure and a lot of hours from a volunteer standpoint. And that's why I wanted to bring this slide up. So I came on board six months ago. And we, because of where we were at with the Greater Manhattan Project and with the rebranding from even more of a regional standpoint, I felt like that it was important to make sure that we have, that we're building those relationships. Not to slow down any progress that's here in Manhattan by any means. So the plan, the Greater Manhattan Plan, has identified who the lead of each initiative should be. And that plan is still in place. So Region Reimagine should not be slowing anyone down from any progress being made. With that being said, because the Greater Manhattan Project serves as that foundation, and there's going to be additional components folding into it, the goal is, on this slide, to continue working with those workgroups. Sure, it's going to be a living document, but the next version to be approved by July this summer. So once that's in place, I think we need to go through that process of identifying, what are the key things that are a truly local effort versus a regional effort? What level of support can I provide to both, really? But primarily those regional efforts. And to kind of filter out which components that Region Reimagine may be able to support versus something that we don't have any control of whatsoever, and this group over here needs to just keep moving forward. So I hope that helps. So I think in taking the Greater Manhattan Project Plan and in the way that it will be outlined, I hope to more clearly delineate who's doing what. So that then, as we build that dashboard, we're able to put in performance measures and see on a regular basis how it's going.
Yeah, no, that absolutely is so.
So we're building that structure, and I would say by July, it should be in much better shape, where you can start seeing that progress. But everyone should continue doing everything that they should be doing in their own organizations.
Do you think, over the aggregate, and again, as we get further into it, I guess, I know all of this doesn't come down to like policymaking or governing or money, but do you, some of the asks will be a little bit more direct. Like, even when I look at the last slide, overview of conditions to focus on talent attraction, and number four, increase safe childcare options/capacity. I don't think that that's huge news to any of us, right? And so, do you think that that's going to be molded down to maybe actual suggestions on, here's the actions that you can take, City of Manhattan?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes. Eventually. I would say the childcare will be one of those components. I do feel that that's important. It may not be the first thing that we're tackling. So the strategic plan would identify what may happen on the short term, midterm, long term.
And then, just related to that, the only other thing that I could think of, and again, I know we're so early into this, but, I mean, when we talk about the Aggieville vision, we passed the Aggieville vision, and when we talk about the investments that we're making in the North Campus Corridor, even though those are very Manhattan-specific, they're probably probably two of the most important neighborhoods in the region.
Right.
And it would have been interesting to get input from the regional level on the decisions that we are making in those areas. So, again, moving forward, when we start to revisit Aggieville again, do you feel like some of your committees will weigh in, or you'll give opinions on some of the decisions that we make there? Or are you just going to completely leave that into our ballpark? Even, I realize it's a city issue, so it's our decision at the end of the day, but they're important areas.
It is a, it is a local decisions as to what happens in Aggieville, but at the same time, it is something that will have a regional impact. And so, I guess with that, especially being a planner and the role of Region Reimagine, Region Reimagine supports the plans that are in place and adopted by any community. So, I know the City of Manhattan has multiple plans, and so, if there are barriers that are getting in the way, and Region Reimagine can help with that, happy to do so if we feel that that's an appropriate role. Is that a good way to answer that?
Yeah, yeah.
And in some instances, it may not be.
Yeah, no, totally understand. Just big-ticket items, at least me, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels. I would be interested to hear what like the Built Environment Committee would have to say about all of the huge infrastructure things that we're doing in Aggieville and how that affects our partners regionally. Last question I have was about, on the housing slide, about the CIP. So, this predated you a little bit. We had a, we did have a CIP in our last budget. I think, I don't know if it would have passed regardless because we had a pretty tight budget last year, but we pulled it, I at least suggested that we pulled it back because I was under the assumption that there was going to be an ask from Region Reimagine to help fund a regional one. And so, I was like, maybe it doesn't make sense for us to do just a Manhattan one. So, is the ask here for us to move forward just on the Manhattan-specific one? And does that, does that really help you with what you're trying to do at a regional level?
Right. So, I think it all comes down to the data. There, I've been working with city staff, and city staff feel that depending on the level of data that's needed, it may be that a consultant is hired to work on that market analysis piece, and that existing data is sufficient with a light level of review to then make sure that it's supplying what is needed in order to get to the end result, right, of making those recommendations that are specific. From a region, regional perspective, like I said, every county has their own particular issues, and so, and they're completely different from a housing perspective, but
So, I guess my question for you.
Yeah, we had, well, we had a meeting with Flint Hills Regional Council, for example, and that's a lot of times the kickstart before they work on a comprehensive plan, for example. And so, just a couple of weeks ago, I had them go through the plans that they've created, and at what level was that housing data collected? And there's a range there. And so, there may be some possibilities to do some housing conditions assessments to then make that data more whole without duplicating or in working with them. So, I showed them some possibilities of how we could go about that together. So, they're handling certain components from certain communities, and then wherever there's gaps, Region Reimagine may need to fill in. So, it'll probably end up, I mean, it will be up to each jurisdiction as to what level of support or data. They feel quality data is needed. From a funding standpoint, Region Reimagine does not have any funding at this time for that.
Which, I knew we were going to spend money. I guess my question for you is, I mean, I'm totally supportive of us spending $90,000 to hire a consultant to do a housing study for the City of Manhattan, but would it make a lot more sense for us to work through the Flint Hills Regional Council and maybe spend $50,000 in Potawatomi County, Wamigo could get money, Junction City, Gary could get money, and we'd hire one consultant and do a regional study, rather than all of us hiring our own consultants, probably spending more money in the long run? Is that something that, I guess I just thought that that would be something that the regional R2 would help coordinate?
Sure.
Out of the, through this process?
Sure. So, from my regional lens, I think that that's a good idea, but I think it will require more conversations with each jurisdiction to identify if that's important to them. So, if the timing can align, I think that that would be great, and if the City of Manhattan is open for that, but that'd be a local decision that y'all would, may want to talk about.
I just think if it's a conversation we should have sooner rather than later because we're coming up on budgets, right?
Right, absolutely.
So, it's just a decision, are we going to do this as a city or we're going to do it at a regional level? Because, yeah, I think that was a major reason why we pulled it last year. And so, I just, I want to make sure that if we spend a sum of money on a set of data, it's going to be useful for us, but our partners on the regional level being like, hmm, we should have coordinated that a little bit better a year later, so that's all I had.
Right. So, we could pull a group together to ask some of the key jurisdictions to see if that's something that they're interested in. I've had some preliminary conversations just to kind of gauge that level of interest, but that process isn't done yet. So, we could, we could pull a group together to have that conversation if you'd like.
Thank you.
Kristi, this is a lot of information. I think you covered it very thoroughly. Thank you. I do suggest maybe using a darker color, just, we have this in front of us just for public to see, but other than that, the information is a lot, and I'm glad the way you organized it, it was easier for us to handle. I can't imagine what you have on your computer for all of this, at the same time, everything you've collected. So, I have a few questions. They might seem not well-connected because they're just kind of thoughts that I wrote down as we're going. So, I know there is a committee or a board, an implementation board, that works with you, but who do you report to? Who do you take this to? Who guides you? What governance structure guides you?
Sure. So, there is an implementation committee that serves as kind of the decision-making, almost like a board of directors group. So, they're the decision-making body that I.
So, you present this to them, and they give you guidance?
I provide updates, yes. I am housed with the City of, I mean, I'm sorry, I worked for cities for years, with the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce. And just from a money savings logistical standpoint, there are some resources that I tap into to, for basic operations, so we're not spending more than we need to on some of those operating expenditures. So, I'm housed at the Chamber, and so, I report to the Chamber CEO.
Okay.
As well as that implementation committee.
Right. So, one of the things is, if we're talking region, and this is Region Reimagine, would you be, would that governance look, with having all three, all of the CEOs of chambers, part of that?
So, that's a really timely question. We have been working on a charter for the makeup of that group and what that looks like. I don't know at this time that there's any anticipation that that, who I'm housed with and report to would change necessarily, but the makeup of the implementation committee to make sure that there is solid representation from all, from, throughout the region is serving on there. So, we've been working through those conversations. Later this week, the implementation committee will be having further discussions, so I'll be able to answer you more fully once that decision is made.
Yeah. Because the Flint Hills Regional Council does have governance from all of those communities, and then they take back to their communities. So, I was thinking, and Gary Stith, and they have their own groups of employees that work with that. So, I was wondering how that works, because it is Region Reimagine as opposed to just Manhattan.
Sure.
That might become an issue as you move forward. Also, with, since you're the Lone Ranger on this, there was talk about other employees being hired either to be working under you or along with you. Do you know where that is in this process, or has that discussion come up yet? I know there was talk when we were first initiating it, there would be three to five other people with you.
Right. I have had that. I am aware of two positions that were talked about, but we're not in a position or stage where we would be able to take those on at this time. So, the timing of those being brought up, again, I'm not, I'm not sure, but it's not at the forefront of our minds at the moment with Jason Smith being our new CEO of Manhattan Chamber. I know he has been asked to review everything from an operational structure standpoint and financial standpoint, and so, that may be one of the things that he is looking at.
Yeah, mainly because, like we mentioned, we're going to be discussing budget, and I didn't know, I'm assuming that's not going to be in this budget cycle as far as an ask. It might come at a later time. But I also don't want you to be so overwhelmed that with all of these balls in the air, and you're in charge of it, but you're going to get run out at some point, and it's going to be hard. I have a hard time keeping track of people's names. I can't imagine what it might be like if you have so many people that you're working with, especially with all the groups and the layers that are there. Let's see. We talked about implementation, action plans. So, under each of those bullets, you have so many bullets, is there a process, you're working with your implementation committee, to maybe just have two or three bullets under each of those, so it's not so daunting? I don't know.
From, from what all the, each of the workgroups are working on?
Each of the workgroups, and also just with the three, three that you mentioned, with the talent and the place, quality of place, and other areas that you mentioned, just.
At this point, I think if there are changes to the overall structure, that would be something that would be taken to what is called a steering committee, that if there's any significant changes, they would need to discuss that. I don't foresee that structure changing necessarily. The components of what we are focused on and the timeline in which we focus on should be spelled out in that strategic plan.
Yeah, because there's, there's a lot of good information, but there's so much that it's going to be impossible to wrap your head around where you accomplished something, to put checkmarks against, three months, we accomplished this, six months, we accomplished this. So, it's short-term and long-term, specific goals is what I'm looking at. And as you move forward on this, I know there are other areas that used Market Street, I think Topeka and Wichita. Are you following any of their own models, or are you kind of guiding, is your team, are you and your team guiding it on your own? Are you kind of seeing what happened with theirs?
Right. So, I've made connection with Topeka, 2020, Momentum 2020, and they're further along in the process, and so, I am hearing and learning about kind of lessons learned when they were setting their structure up and what that looked like. So, absolutely, we're not ignoring any of that. We want to use that. I know when I was preparing even for my interview, I went out and researched what Market Street and all the different communities and that they had produced one of the plans, and the City of Austin, I like to use that as an example, and I know it's a completely different city than what Manhattan is, but some of the issues are the same. So, there's those common threads, and the way that they've packaged their information is really impressive. So, I like to use the City of Boston as one of those. But yes, Topeka and several other communities, we don't want to lose sight of that and even where they're at in the process, and as time goes by, are there any new developments that we need to learn from to work our program differently?
Kind of also for your own peer group, let's say, or for your own professional development to see if something's working or not working. Do you know how many people they hired under them, such as, let's say, Topeka or any other group? They've had their planner like you, a major chair that's sharing this. How many others that they had to hire?
You know, I would have to get back to you on that one.
Okay, that's fine.
It's been a few months since I've talked to him, yes.
Yeah, no, but I like the work you're doing. I just don't want you to be overwhelmed, and also, I don't want to lose track of what are the goals of this. This is great information, but how do we know we've accomplished something?
Sure.
Like, what has come to fruition from it? And that might be a year or two down the, you know, down the line, but it would be nice to see what it is we are aiming for. What is it, are we aiming for?
Right. I think, I think once we hit July and have the Greater Manhattan Plan enhanced with some additional information, it'll become more clear. And then, once we have that dashboard in place, I've worked with multiple dashboards in a lot of different places I've worked in, and the one that I'm, would like to use, won't take very long to set up, so I think that'll be the key to getting that information back out.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I just have one question on finance, because it's not clear on the slides. What's the current financing for Region Reimagine? Where's it come from?
So, Advantage Manhattan is a fund from businesses that are contributing to that fund that pay for Region Reimagine, the expenses. So, right now, when I came onboard, I was asked to come up with just an operating budget, so it's just bare-bones kind of skeleton to keep me here and to move me forward. There are projects that, as we go through and kind of evolve and identify this is important, yes, we want to move forward, then each of the projects may have a different funding strategy. And hopefully, a lot of those can be resolved through public and private partnerships. Some may still be up to the entity that's making that decision to move those forward. But I think from a project standpoint, they would all have different funding strategies of where those dollars are coming into play.
So, what, you know, just to keep it simple though, so right now, we're saying this is private-funded, the Chamber, there's no government funding?
Through Advantage Manhattan.
Okay. And then, in the future, there is plans to ask for government funding from various government agencies, county, city?
I would say that that's a possibility, but we're not at that stage quite yet. And like I said, Jason Smith is going to be looking at the organizational structure and funding of all accounts and what that might look like.
Okay, thanks.
Can you pull up the slide with the umbrella on it? So, one of the things we've talked about is that this is a little bit more difficult than just doing it for the city. So, in the top part, there were some things identified, and I'd say, right now, we're in the data gathering phase. So, there's things identified that span across the region. Then, you see the little trays down there below. So, one of the things we're going to have to go through is a prioritization and then a costing, because when, I mean, just because you like something doesn't mean you can afford it, and that will put it in some priority over time. And then, obviously, when someone asks a question about other chambers of commerce and other connection with officials, so when you, when you maybe come up with some ideas in this group, this group, let's say you're in Gary County, in order to build something, you've got to go back to your local officials to get that built. If you're up in the regional, then we have to discuss what is each contribution, or do you, does one want to build part, one build another part in front of their town? So, that's kind of how that is going to unfold. So, when, when we come up in Riley County, for example, or Manhattan with a group of action items, those will have a cost associated with them, and hopefully, a timing associated with them, and that's when we'll begin to digest them. And that'll, that'll be true for each one of the individual cities and counties as we go through this. So, when you look in the back of the report that was initially done by Market Street, what you'll find is there's a matrix back there of costs over time, and this is a five-year project. So, I think you're right, Kristi, when, as we get further along, we'll be able to better forecast the costs and whether or not we can bear that out of the Greater Manhattan, not Greater Manhattan, the Advanced Manhattan Fund, or if we're going to have to ask each one of the counties and the participating cities to handy up a little bit, particularly to do the regional part. A terrific job, that was, there's a lot of material. Having seen the thickness of that, this was a great synopsis.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristi. Okay, now, we're on item three, which is to discuss the establishment. An increase to the local sales tax rate. You all by yourself, Jason?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. We're going to talk about the opportunity for a permanent sales tax question on the November ballot. Objectives this evening include determining whether or not we want to proceed. If we do, it is 0.3 percent, the increase of choice. If we do, it is point three percent, the increase of choice. We have a question that's been drafted by legal, like you to take a look at, and then help us determine key talking points as we move forward if we decide to put this on the ballot. Some of the major whys that we can come up with deal with a number of projects that we've been studying, designing, and engaging with the community or state and federal partners now for several years. The levy, obviously, being one at the forefront, $28 million project. Aggieville, a $30 million project, something we've engaged with the community on a couple different occasions, had close to 5,000 participants in surveys at two different points in time on Aggieville runway. We've had some recent discussions with Jesse Romo and our airport director on that federal funding, majority of that project potential. Joint Maintenance Facility just had an update a few meetings ago about the opportunity to go out by the wastewater treatment plant. Senrec, which will be back on your agenda May 7th, another three and a half to $5 million project. North Campus Corridor, a $43 million project. We've spent the last five years working with K-State in joint partnership on that design and effort, and have actually entered into design contracts, one construction contract, and we'll be on the cusp of another construction contract this summer. Seven years of projects and construction, roughly 30 years of debt service, so from 2020 to 2050 is what we have projected for all these projects. There's $190 million in construction. Now, not all of those are revenue dependent when it comes to city at large, but we do have a $50 million gap when it comes to the list of projects that I just went through there in that first bullet. Now, that gap can be made up from property tax, or it can be made up through sales tax, or a combination thereof. Six mills today would generate 3.3 million that we're talking about with a point three percent sales tax. You know, and that's at today's mill value, and the point three is obviously at today's revenue stream based on that total $1.1 billion sales in the community. So in effect, it's kind of a decision of are we moving forward with these projects? If we are, we're reaching a point in time where we either go to the community and suggest either property tax would be the alternative source, or if you choose, we can put this to a, a vote to see if the increase in sales tax rate could be pursued to fund those projects. The 1% the city currently has is permanent. It's part of an 8.95% tax rate. There's a breakdown there that we went through several times. Our 1% generates 11 million annually, and we spend that in these four categories. Bernie covers this chart for you all every year during the budget season. We spend of that 11, seven and a half on the general fund, really to fund people within the organization. I know Bernie cautions you every time we see that and we realize that. You don't find too many communities that operate with sales tax in this manner. They're way too, the revenue stream fluctuates greatly in a lot of communities, and we're fortunate in Manhattan to have an upward trending sales tax for the last 20 years and somewhat leveled off in the last five. There are communities that have seen great dips and declines in this revenue stream, so they rarely put it in funds where they support people. Because in doing so, if you hit a decline, you need to get rid of those people, or come up with other ways to generate revenue. 3.08 million in the employee benefit fund, 162,000 in the KPNF, and then 43,000 in the general improvement fund, round out the balance of the 11 million. Over the last five years, I mentioned the sales tax has leveled off. You can see on average of a point 92% increase. We established the first half cent Manhattan in 1971 by ballot question. I provided you all a history of questions in your packet throughout the last 40 or 50 years in the community. And then in 1982, that ballot question increased another half percent. I included those questions. One, Jared Wassinger, our assistant, who did that as part of his coursework at K-State, but it was just excellent information for all of us to understand. It's also quite telling that the number of voters that showed up in the 1980s are about the same number of voters that show up today for local elections. Another breakdown of the 895, just kind of calls out the special taxes and the street, which all have, those two have sunsets. The economic development, roads and bridges also has a sunset in 2022. The streets, I believe, is 2027, 26, 27? 27, and then special park and rec would be also in 2028, because it was voted on in '07, but it started in '18. Yeah, so it'd be 2028 before it retires. First-class cities, sales tax rates. Right now, we rank 18th at 8.95, tied with Garden City for '19 and '18. The increase that we're talking about brings us to the 925 range, which would then tie us with Pittsburgh's, Parsons', and Liberal. The poll factor Manhattan has, and I'll flashback to that slide before, you can kind of see the poll factors out here for the top first-class cities in Kansas. Our 1.33 is significant. Values greater than 1 indicate that local businesses are polling in trade beyond our city borders. We do 1.1 billion in sales on an annual basis, and 25% of that, based on the 1.33, is generated, or 272 million, almost 273 million, is generated from people who don't live within the city limits. Every time we talk about a sales tax in Manhattan, whether it was Quality Alive, street sales tax, it was, we always educated the commission and the community that this is an opportunity for us to leverage folks who are visiting the community. It's also an opportunity to make our community more attractive, to keep people visiting our community. It is a very strong revenue stream for the community. A lot of the projects on that list were about improving Manhattan, making Manhattan a quality place to live and increasing that quality, protecting what we have and enhancing what we have. So thereby, the sales tax correlating with the potential to increase that and leverage our visitors into the community who are shopping here and visiting here to help pay for some of those improvements. We have a breakdown of a couple different scenarios. Here's an annual household income scenario that would show an annual impact in our economic development model that was put together almost 20 years ago, and Bernie and I had a good conversation about this recently, too. 30% was included in that model that looks at incomes throughout our applicants, especially when it comes to jobs that we're creating in the community, to look at how much sales tax is actually generated from a new job or people who come to the community. So here's a list of annual household incomes, anywhere from $12,500 up to $200,000. And you can see at 30% of their income being spent on taxable goods, what that means by going from an 8.95% to a 9.25%. And you can see the $11 that would impact that individual making 12.5, all the way up to $180 a year for the household income of $200,000. Correspondingly, the next chart starts to then look at if you increased your residential values and you added the mill levies. I'm going to get out of that so you can see it a little bit better. If you increased your value of your home, correspondingly by your assessed value also increasing, your levy then going from the 145 mills that we have today to 152, we would look, that's a seven mill increase. I know the math is done on six, I apologize for the 152, it should have been 151. But it shows the increase of what those residential properties would be incurring in order to generate the additional revenue necessary to retire the debt. Commercial and residential properties taxed differently, so I showed examples of the 11 and a half for residential and the 25% for commercial. And then what the taxes that obviously they're paying today at the 1.145, and then the 1.151, which it should be for the six-mill increase in the chart. So there's a, there's a vast difference between what you see impacting home values versus annual household incomes. Even if, go to the extreme of annual household income of 200,000 and suggest they have a $350,000 home, the taxes at the home would be 282 versus the 180 on the retail side. And then obviously, there's a lot of examples in between. $100,000 household income, you, you do have to make some assumptions on what could a $100,000 home, a $100,000 income on an annual basis afford by way of a home, but even drop it down to $200,000, the 161 compared to the 90. Now, each of you know your household income, each of you know the value of your home, and it gets, it's easy to kind of compare the two and see, in what scenario would you spend the most money? And I think a lot of that is evident in allowing our visitors to help us pay under the sales tax scenario. Project timeline, I handed that out, and I'll pull that up here. It gives you an idea of where we're at for that 190 million. I will tell you that Rob and Brian and Public Works are not going to agree that we're going to be done in 2023 with either North Campus Corridor or Aggieville redevelopment. That starts to stretch out our projects over the next seven years, but that full amount i- is not something that will be captured in that four-year period. So that, when we talk about this taking more than five or six years, that's, that's what we're talking about. Projects that'll start even five years from now won't hit the debt until year eight or nine. So we've stretched that out really over the next seven years in order to reach into 2050 for debt service on a 20-year project, our 20-year debt service schedule. So the 190 million is a combination of all of these. As, as I mentioned, the Anthony Eisenhower Downtown Conference Center, airport parking, they don't have a bond and interest type of impact, but you can see that projects that do are in this $50 million range, and that's the gap that we've been talking about, trying to come up with a revenue stream to cover that. That 49.5 after debt service is, it's over $88 million, once you factor in interest and the time to pay that debt back. That's where we get to the 3.3 million for the 30-year period in order to generate enough revenue to cover that debt. Now, we've ran all these projects out from a debt service schedule, and clearly, if it passed in November, we'd start collecting revenue next year. We wouldn't have 1.6 or 1.7 million dollars worth of debt next year. We wouldn't even have $3.3 million worth of debt in '21 or '22. I mean, even if we issued a lot of debt today, we wouldn't start paying until 2022. My caution here is, we need to capture all this revenue for these projects, for the most part, and set it aside in bond and interest, because if you start spending that money early, you won't have enough. If you don't let it build up in a reserve and then use it over that period of time, meaning if we don't have the discipline to hold on to this money until the debt actually reaches the bond and interest, we won't have enough. We will have enough if we stay disciplined with it and set aside the appropriate amount. That's a little bit of kind of the conference center funding as well. We put the, we put the transient guest tax increase in place. We're going to capture that $130,000 for a few years to help us pay off until 2027, when other revenues become available. This is similar. We have to build up this reserve, so as projects come along, we have enough. And when we really hit the, the threshold in about 2035, where everything's on, online, we've got enough revenue to cover it, and that reserve has been built up. But for simplistic purposes, you can see the 88 that's necessary and the 99 that we'll generate, and that's at zero interest inflation. That's at revenues basically we would see today.
Is that really practical with all of these projects that are short-term, that we're going to be facing within like the next three years?
And as I mentioned, Linda, it's going to take seven years
Right.
to get through all 49.5. So we've, we've laid out every one of these projects with a 20-year debt schedule, and it really stretches from 2020 to 2050. And we've looked at every annual payment with interest, correspondingly adding the $3.3 million every year to a running total, and yes, there's enough revenue to cover those six projects.
And the discipline would not include overruns or change orders?
Well, the, the projects that we have up here
These are general numbers, I agree.
are, are built with a lot of contingencies, a lot. I, I mean, I can speak for North Campus and Aggieville specifically.
Okay.
With a levy in the runway, we believe, we feel like we have adequate
Okay.
estimates here to cover what it is we're going to do. So we're hoping, you know, there's always the hope that these projects actually come in, and then you factor in the 3.3 having zero inflation. And the last 20 years, it clearly has averaged almost 2%, but we don't want to do that and get ahead of ourselves by way of revenue projections. The draft question has been put together, essentially asking to impose an additional three tenths on top of the one that exists. As I mentioned, this is a permanent, this doesn't, this does not sunset. Obviously, we need 30 years of revenue to help offset the project costs and the debt financing. A key piece of this is reducing the impact on the ad valorem property tax burden. As I mentioned before, we clearly have the decision to make. As we come to you with projects, the financing section is going to indicate bond and interest and property tax in the event these things, this doesn't pass. If this passes, now you're talking about bond and interest with the point three sales tax as a funding source. There's always discretion. There's always the choice whether or not you're going to invest in each of those six categories. The levy, the runway, Aggieville, North Campus Corridor, Senrec, Joint Maintenance Facility. There's always discretion. We have worked, and you have put in a lot of hours on all those projects. If, if we're not going to do them, we can start taking those off the list. But we've reached a point, and you've already seen a lot of these projects, at the point where you're making decisions, and it, it behooves us to look at how are we going to pay for them before we go any further? Because we've spent hundreds of thousands, if not millions, on those six projects, getting them to the point where we're ready to move forward. And we need to be able to tell each other how we're going to pay for them. We did go out with our annual survey with questions, just to test the community. So we sent out over 6,000 surveys, we got over 1,100 back. The next three slides are data that we've gathered and, and ran with preliminary results in order to give you a little bit of feedback from the community. We asked a question in the survey about the 8.95 increasing by point three to a 925. We asked a question in the survey about the 8.95 increasing by .3 to a 9.25. As you can see, strongly support 18 and a half percent and support 35.8. We're about 54% supporting the increase. And that's as much information really as they had right there. Opposition, you can see the 38, 39%, and those who just don't know at 6.35. We then broke down by age group of the 1,100 or so that responded. And you can see 35 to 44 is our largest group of supporters. And the 45 to 54s are smaller. We've got some work to do. I sat down with Eric Reed last week and asked him, they did some preliminary surveys for their $130 million bond issue. And I asked him, where were your surveys at for the big package? He said our initial look was anywhere from 54 to 55%. They ended up passing that at 64 in support. Clearly, their education efforts made headway based on their survey results. And we know we've got that challenge ahead of us. We did ask questions about flooding, North Campus and Aggieville. Mitigating flooding and improving stormwater drainage, clearly overwhelming support. North Campus intrigued me, seeing 66% in support or strongly supporting. The piece of that that I figured would really sway people is the don't knows. North Campus Corridor is not an easy thing to understand and digest. I was surprised that it was only 17.3% that didn't know whether or not we should support that project. But Aggieville consistently has been in the 70 percentile for support from the community. Possible timeline, resolution approving the question in May or June. Public education, June through November. And then question due to Riley County, September 1st. Last day to register and advance voting then on the 15th and 16th, and election day then on the 5th. So this evening, looking for direction and feedback on whether or not that ballot question should be drafted and considered. Are you okay with the .3? And does a question drafted by legal meet your expectations? Stand for any questions you may have.
I would just say, Jason, that I am really, growth has been so important to this community to make it an attractive place for people to want to come in an era when economic decline is taking place all around us, actually. And in order for us to keep, we can't, I really buy into the part about we can't stall or stop, we have to keep going. I do have a concern about initiating a sales tax addition too frequently, I guess. And we've just done, you know, some. On the other hand, this is for a whole different era. And this has, as far as I'm concerned, is a reaction to the tax lid and the limits that have been placed on us. And we, if we want to accomplish some of this, we're going to have to do it this way in order to avoid trying to rely on the general fund because we can't move where the lid is bumping, we're bumping up against it. So I, I'm going to support this. I think it's important for our future, seeing all these projects that we have had on the drawing board. I don't know where the, where it stops, you know, that upward movement at all. And I'd like for us after, you know, this is like one more bite here that we need to do. And then slow down a little bit because we, we can't go any further with, as far as I'm concerned, the mill levy or the sales tax or we have to have another kind of revenue, perhaps the internet sales tax or some other infusion of funding. So I would put this before the voters, that's where it needs to go. And because it's certainly something that our city is, and our community needs to get that infusion of, and venues that will attract people here. So, but I did have a question about only 25% of the sales tax we collect is from out-of-town visitors. And I think I thought it was a lot higher than that is, have, where does that, that's that extrapolation you talked about?
Yeah, with the pull factor of 1.33. If it was 1.0, if we basically generated no leakage and nobody came from outside, 1.0 on the sales that we would do in the community would be just over 800 million. Since we are a 1.33 pull factor, our sales at 1.1 billion. It's a math equation of the 1 over the 1.3 and then X over the 1.1 billion and you're solving for that, just to see what you would be at 1.0. Clearly, at 1.33, we're doing 1.1 billion in sales. So it's just a math equation to figure out how much is actually coming from people who don't live in Manhattan. We clearly have leakage. I mean, all of us leave Manhattan and spend dollars, taxable dollars. We just gain that much more back. So it, those are rough numbers. I mean, they're estimates based on what we have for totals. But the 1.33 doesn't equate to 33% more. It equates to 25% more of the total.
I was thinking with 40% of K-State employees living out of the city and a percentage of other employees that work here that live in all the surrounding counties, that it would be closer to 40%. But I can accept, I have, if you've, you have some basis for what you're saying, that's better than my.
So the interesting pull factor data that we pulled up for counties, Riley County's pull factor is .77. Potawatomi County's pull factor is 1.4. It's higher than ours. It speaks to Manhattan City Limits being in Potawatomi County and how much actually occurs in Potawatomi County in the city of Manhattan. There's a tremendous amount of sales that's generated there. The other analysis we've done is looking at a city tax versus a county tax. We generate as much in the city as if you draw the tax around the whole Riley County, including Manhattan, but not the Pot County side. So that, it's just, it's an even equation. There's just a lot going on on the Potawatomi County side of Manhattan City Limits. A lot of revenue.
Thank you.
When is the, when do we renew the EcoDevo tax, Infrastructure One? 2022, so it'll be in the 2021 city election.
So there's options. There are communities that have gone early to ask that question, to give it possibly a couple different ballots to make it on in the event they fail. It's a strategy to consider. The 2020 election is actually the presidential election in November. It'll turn out.
So you don't necessarily have to ask that question on a city election?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's to the, I mean, every time you go through the county, they ask a question. It can be a city or a county question.
Okay.
Um, well, I don't have a ton of feedback other than I say yes on all three of these. I'm in hesitant, hesitant support just because I know sales tax is a regressive tax, but I've said this before. I think in the example of a community that's 60% rental, you could make an argument that property tax is regressive as well. And I have hesitations with the increasing mill. That's why I voted not to increase the mill last time. So I think this is really a question for voters to decide, would you rather pay for this via sales tax or would you rather pay for it via property tax? Or, and if they say no to this, and then it's a question, do these things happen or not? And so, you know, there'll be a lot of rhetoric and discussion about this over the next few months, but I would be supportive of all. The only thing that I would encourage us to do as a city, and I mean, I'm sure you've already talked about this, is really dig down deep on, and if we're going to focus on these big projects, the selling point about this is how those projects benefit every person in our community. Socioeconomic factors, like neighborhood factors, like how do they benefit everybody who lives here? I think sometimes, and sometimes I have this same perception that North Campus Corridor is largely benefiting one kind of sector and area of our community. Why is that assumption wrong? And we have to make that information very clear. But otherwise, I'm supportive of letting the voters decide how, how to pursue this issue.
So I know several areas of the, of our city have different sales tax. In which of the areas will it be over 10?
None would.
So the highest would be what?
10.
The highest would be 10?
The mall would be 10.
The mall would be 10. Okay. So in downtown or even in the TDDs we have, those would be what then?
They are basically 9.45 today.
Today, they're 9.5?
Yeah. 9.4, 9.45.
9.45.
Yeah, they go to 9.75.
Okay, okay. So I just wanted to be clear that not all of them are going to be the same.
Correct.
And in several areas, it's going to be at 10, mainly the.
Just the mall.
The mall, for now, because other people might want to use that economic development resource at a different time in the next few years. Who knows how the city is going to go? I'm not in favor of the sales tax, but I'm not completely opposed to it. But I do want to see some modifications. Because I think there's some assumptions being made. For example, if we're going to go with this draft question, I think it's very loosely worded where it just says, intended to reduce the impact on the ad valorem property sales, property tax burden. I'd rather have it more specific. I think all the other questions I've seen that were in the past, whether it was Riley County School District or the city, there were more specifics, exactly what is that money going towards? I think I would feel comfortable if it was dedicated to these projects. And I don't mind having a sunset date. Because we are going to look at other sales tax revenues for other ones we're going to be coming for.
The sunset is, it's 10 years is what statute basically says today. I do think there are options. You can do a longer tax, but it's, I've seen 15. But I think you actually get, the legislature may actually have to grant you that authority to go beyond 10. But I know communities and counties have submitted questions to the legislature and have had them approved to go longer. That's the problem with ours being, you need a full run of 30 years for that revenue potentially to pay off those projects. That, it just makes it a, it's just, it's a different process to get to that point.
So can't we say, can't we word it such that it will maybe not use the word sunset? But this, this will be in place till, it's a dedicated revenue source for these specific projects?
And if we use the permanent sales tax or statute, I'd have to ask Bill and Katie, even going from the 1% that's permanent today, hypothetically, let's just say the five of you said, we only want a half. We want to reduce it. There, I'll ask them. I'll speculate and say, I think you may actually have to go ask the voters. I don't think you can do that.
What do you mean?
That you would have to pose that back to the electorate to even lower it because it's permanent.
For this one? See, I'm not in, yeah, I'm.
Just permanent in general.
Yeah, I'm kind of opposed to the permanent component of it because I think this is, it's kind of misrepresented. Because even in the survey question, which is disappointing that we only had 1,100 of the 6,000, so that's a very small percentage of our community. So the question they said either strongly support or support indicates, currently the sales tax is, in Manhattan is at 8.95%. In most areas of the community, the state of Kansas keeps 6.5% of the total sales tax revenue. The city of Manhattan dedicates much of the remaining revenues to operations in order to keep city reliance on property taxes low. So I feel like this almost indicates, would you support increasing the sales tax in order to keep the property taxes low? They're saying yes to that because they're thinking that property taxes are going to be low, almost substitute sales tax for property tax. And they may assume, if it was me and I was the late person that read that, that my property taxes won't be raised by the city, the mill levy won't be raised during this time. That could be the assumption that, that people may have supported or strongly supported. I'm not sure, most of them when they tapped into this strongly supporter support, thought, okay, I'm just going to say yes to the sales tax and probably the property tax is going to increase too. I'm not sure that's the way they saw it.
And it's a good point, and it really reiterates why we need to educate between June and November. The comment that I made earlier to the five of you is the same comment. If you sunset it in 10 years, is that governing body going to put the question back out to renew or raise the mill levy in order to cover your debt and bond and interest? The debt will remain.
Right.
It'll be due. And you'll have to come up with either additional taxes or cut services or cut something at that point in time to make up for three and a half, $3 million worth of debt payments. That's the position, by only going 10 years, you're putting a future community in if this is tagged as being the revenue source for these six projects. Our education process is about, one, do you want to do these things? Do you want to raise the levy and protect the billion dollars of assets downtown? If you do, it's going to cost $10 million of local dollars to do that. Do you want to raise your property taxes or do you want to raise your sales tax? It's the same conversation we've, we have on every debt project out there. I mean, if you want to do those things, we have to pay for them. Only asking a 10-year question puts the community right back in that position in 10 years where they're having, I mean, if it fails for whatever reason, then, then the governing body and the budget just take, take one heck of a hit to try to make that up.
I understand that. My thinking is, the community is going to assume, they're not going to be able to separate all of that, that this is going to dedicated bond and interest.
I would agree with you. I'm surprised, given that question.
Because that question.
There's 54% of people that said yes. Because they had no education.
There's nothing in there, and they're thinking their property taxes won't be rising. That's what they're assuming.
I think it's a similar response that the school district got. Out of the gate, 130 million, your taxes are going up. Are you in support of this? 54 out of the shoot said yes. 64% voted yes. I think there's an opportunity with the education to get there.
Move on to another point if you can.
Well, I just want to, I want this revised is what I'm saying. And I don't know if the rest of you feel that way. It has to be, well, I don't know how you're going to do the education process. Because when we start talking about the budget, this is going to come up again. My fear is if we go forward with this and then we're going to do the property taxes for the mill levy. And I don't want to see that happen. I think this has to be clear, at least for the projects dedicated. I can't approve it in this manner tonight unless there's some revisions. And, you know, you might have a 4-1 vote on that. So I'll leave it at that. But I, I don't mind having a good discussion about it because it does raise a lot of people's money. And a lot of income is not raising, but everything else is raising, so.
My thoughts on this are, I think the folks that took that survey probably do believe that if we go with this sales tax, we won't be jumping the mill levy a huge amount. And I won't vote for increasing the mill levy if this thing passes as a sales tax. I mean, I prefer sales tax over mill levy, and the reason is, well, your charts brought that out. You actually pay less, no matter what income bracket you are, by paying the sales tax and your own property tax. And then if you highlight the business impact on this, we're going to run some businesses out of here if we keep raising it. And my concern is, you know, and one of the reasons I, I lean towards the sales tax is because the voters raised our mill levy almost eight mils on that school bond. It's just that simple. If that hadn't happened, I may approach this differently. But they've already slammed us with eight mils. We can't afford to put six more on there. Can't do it. You know, people are going to fold up their businesses and leave. This isn't going to happen, and we're going to see an economic downfall. And that pull factor is very important. So I think. So I think this question's worded, you know, right on the money. You know, the voters have got an option. We can either not build that stuff, and that is an option. We can just say, fine. It's going to be interesting if the airport closes, because you don't improve the runway. But, but you could say no. It's probably the worst choice. The second choice is slap another six mils on top of the eight we're already going to get, and, and I think that's a, that's just a non-starter. That isn't going to work for most people. A lot of people are going to make decisions that maybe Manhattan's not the place to live when that happens. And so the only option is, is to go with the, is to go with a sales tax increase, and this isn't really that big one. And, and the thing that's important, as you pointed out, you know, Potawatomi County, a lot of growth over there on that side of the city. So it'll, it'll, it'll capture that, which I've always felt that was the big hole in our economic development tax, is we're not capturing any of that over there. That half-cent ecodevo tax is not applied to the Pot County side of the city. And the only downside I see to this is, I do want to see the ecodevo tax renewed, which has been successful in keeping the ad valorem tax down by about two mils, I think, on average over the years since we've had it in there, based on the charts. So the citizens understand that impact. I think that's one of the reasons that passed, what it did in 2012. And I hope to see us renew that, but again, I'm for using a lot of that for infrastructure, and that's what this thing is. So, so I think, you know, based on the state law, and, you know, it's got to be permanent, it can't be sunset, and I think, you know, as long as that tax is in place, you know, commission's got to understand, you can't be raising the middle levy by huge amounts. Maybe minuscule amounts, like .3, .4, but not 1, 2, 3 mils. Because if that happens, you can pretty much kiss the ecodevo tax goodbye then, because people will remember that. You know, this one will be on the ballot, you know, coming up, and then an ecodevo tax next. If the middle levy keeps going up, people are going to say, well, you can't trust those guys. They're just going to keep sucking in money and spending it. And I think we got to constrain some of the spending, and I presented some options for the budget to repurpose some other funds to, to take care of things. And so, and just based on the options, and I'd prefer not to raise any taxes, but I think the draft question does the least amount of damage. So I'll support it.
Just had a couple of questions. The, do we have debt service on other items right now covered by sales tax?
I asked that question too, because I, we used to have sales tax in our bond and interest fund, and, and since the Lids impact, we, we've really taken all the sales tax out now.
Other than the special purpose sales taxes.
Yeah, you've got, you've got the rec centers, you've got the other projects that are helping with that, but...
Those are in the...
As far as all...
Five or 700,000 range, yeah?
Right. But we used to have quite a bit of sales tax in the bond and interest fund, especially on good years, so that, but with the tax lid, it, it doesn't make sense to.
Right. On the mill level, I've kind of lost track, but I, I thought, when we were going through the budget last year, that I thought the total was going to be 149, but I see, at least for this time, we have 145. Is that, is that right, or is, in the next fiscal year, does it go to 149, and then add the 7.8 after that?
Our mill levy is 49.
Yeah, I mean...
It's 49, 55, and...
See, I thought our, I thought the total was 149. Is it only 145 for this year?
We found it all.
Yes, yeah, the county and Austin USD is total 145? Because I was, I was thinking last year when we had this discussion, that was 149, but if not, it may be a year off.
I think it is 145, right?
Okay. So then, when we add the 7.8 to Commissioner Butler's, we were at 152 or, or so. And then, what's the current thinking on the years that we would ask for this versus ecodevo? I mean, are we, we're going to do this one first, and then come back for ecodevo a year early, or how do that, how does that match up?
I think we'll have certainly some opportunity. For, for us, the reason this issue's in front of us now is, is we're going to have to start obligating ourselves. We already have started obligating ourselves on North Campus Corridor, although we have some funding streams, there's some potential, you know, for example, you know, we're going to apply for a build a grant again, and if we're successful there, that, that'll lower that aspect of it a little bit. But, and there's certainly a few of those opportunities to try and leverage some other sources along the way on some of these projects, but not a lot, because most of them are already obligated for grants. I mean, most of them have grant funding to begin with. So, you know, it's really that timeline that we're facing now, is if this is going to be the way to do it. And if we're not going to do it that way, then we need to slow that project down, or, or decide whether or not we're going to do it. And then on the, with the economic development tax not really expire until '22, there's a lot of opportunity, and we'll certainly want to visit with Riley County about that renewal component.
Yeah. The, this, this question's a little bit obtuse, but when you, when you had that chart of applying a sales tax to different levels of income, normally what happens is, a person with a lower income pays a higher percentage than 30% for their, of their dollars. So we may want to, not for this time, but we may want to just look at the methodology for that, because I think, yeah, I think some people might take objection to that. The, I think the good news is, we are, as a tier-one city, we're in decent shape compared to others, both on the, our standing on the amount of sales tax we charge, and then also on the draw we have. There's only a couple others that draw bigger than we do. Most of those are up, the two that I can think of are up, Olathe and Lenexa. And the other, maybe the other one is only marginally bigger than we are. The bad news is, everybody's raising it, so it doesn't give much comfort overall to anybody. I, I think I'm okay with this. I, I think, like Usha, I would, I don't know if we can do this now, but we may want to just scratch our heads a little bit on how that proposal is framed, to try to make it, you know, I don't have any trouble with making sure that it lasts as long as these projects last, because I think that's our obligation. But I think we need to be fairly, if we can, be specific about where this is going. And we have a, in the same way that we went out to educate the public on parks and rec, and educate the public on streets, and so on, I mean, this is probably going to be heavier lifting than that, because the feedback we got on both those items was more strongly supportive, simply because that was on people's minds, particularly the roads. I mean, everybody kind of recognized that's an issue, but the education process is going to be important, just so there's no fooling. And I agree with Mr. Butler, too. We've got to be mindful here, that we don't raise the sales tax, and then come back and hit them with an increase in the middle levy, so.
Mayor...
Otherwise, Jason, I'm okay with what you've got.
Mayor, I too would support your and Usha's thinking with regard to contouring this language a bit, instead of saying, intended to reduce, let's see, to be used for all lawful expenditures of the city. I just think that if we're, it is our intention to fund these, like, 10 projects. It isn't our intention to use that money for a lot of different topics, and if, if we get a build grant, you know, there's, there's still going to be related costs to some of these. If it's the airport runway, or the levy, or whatever comes along here, we aren't absolutely sure of the, the costs. So anyway, I'd like to see that language contoured a bit more.
See, I, I just don't think that's necessary. I mean, it says ad valorem property tax, you're good to go. If you put those in there, you're going to have the same problems you have with the economic development tax. You put constraints in there, or some of the taxes that were put in place, like for the swimming pools, if you have excess funds, then you can't spend them on anything but the pool. And, and that's the drawback. I mean, it's, it's the legalese that makes it complicated. So, so for me, you know, you put down intent to reduce the impact on ad valorem tax, and as long as that money's spent to keep the middle levy down, that's what the voters are going to vote for. And the rest of this makes it too complicated. Because the other problem then is, say another funding source comes up for one of those five projects, then you're probably not going to want to go for that funding source, you know, because you could fund it out of something else, and then, you know, that leaves, leaves it over. So to me, this makes sense. You're, you're basically saying, look, to keep your property tax low, we're going to recommend this tax, and if it comes through, we'll use it to keep the property tax low. That's a pretty simple concept in my mind. I don't have any problems, you know, with it at all. But if the voters say no to this, then the only other option is not build it, or raise the middle levy. And in my case, I'll vote no on all that. We won't build it, and we won't raise the middle levy. So this is the only way these things are going to get done. You know, that champagne appetite we have, it's got to be funded somehow. Otherwise, it's not going to happen. We're going to drink some bad beer, I guess.
The thing I was thinking about here, and you just have to wrestle this a little bit, to see if language like, be used for bond and interest fund for identifying priority projects, I don't know. Just, I just ask you to stir it a little bit. If it doesn't work...
We can. We'll, we'll sit down with Bill and Katie and come up with some alternative language. I mean, clearly ballot questions in the past did. It just, it causes us to pause every time we read some of those ballot questions, because, you know, we're looking around, are we still doing that?
Bill wrote it was half a page long.
Well, most of the detailed ones have been special purpose ones.
Yeah.
That have been defined for a period of time, where the general, usually if you do a permanent one, it's broader.
And just to weigh in quickly on the rewording, because I didn't really go on that part, I tend to agree with Commissioner Butler on this, because then the reality is, and maybe I won't see then, this in the next budget that we do, this upcoming one, but I have a feeling that I will. One of the things that shocked me last time we did this, was I didn't understand how we ever didn't have to raise the mill moving forward, because COLA increases almost outpace anything else that we can do. So beyond these projects, permanently, we're going to have to find a solution to pay for those operation costs, those COLA increases for personnel over the long term, regardless. And so I think that we should pursue a permanent, I mean, I would hesitate to tighten it down anymore, because otherwise, we'll do what we do on the ecodevo, and we'll argue about what was the intended, and what was the wording on the ballot. I would rather keep it flexible for future commissions, with the understanding, through these minutes, that that was our focus, but nonetheless, you're going to have to find an operational tax to pay for COLA increases just for people. Otherwise, we'll raise the mill every single year.
And if we go back and look at historically, that was really the, what drove the permanent sales tax increases last time. It was, the, the ultimate goal was to reduce property taxes, but it went for any governmental use. And so that's, when you're doing a permanent increase, that's generally the way you put them there. But at the same time, when you pass it, there is legislative intent that's looked at relative to how that's going to be used.
I don't think I, it is my intention to limit it by name to these 10 projects, but there's a lot of difference between totally no control and listing them. So I, that contouring is what I'm interested in, so it gives more substance and focus.
Got enough?
Thank you. Appreciate the comments, because I do think needs to change, so I look forward to what could come up.
Okay, are you up again?
No, I'll take this one.
So this is item number four, which was item, which was added, and this is a discussion on Senate Bill 190 that has to do with LAVTR and road projects and things like that, so...
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, the three of you that participated in the city-county-county meeting last week is kind of where some of this discussion first started, and then there was follow-up discussion at the intergovernmental meeting yesterday, and so the Riley County Commission and, and legal counsel have drafted some language, and actually, they've acted upon it, and I understand the Potawatomi County Commission has also acted on it, and we provided you a, a copy of this. You know, essentially, the Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction Act, as well as the City-City Revenue Sharing, were funds that were created decades ago, that were designed to help offset property taxes, for the most part. They haven't been funded for the last several years, over a decade, in some cases, two decades nearly. And so, and then the state has utilized those proceeds, which are generally collected locally, and then not transferred them back to, to cities. And I think, in our case, especially with the tax lid, that, that was one of the reasons for the Local Ad Valorem Property Tax Reduction, was to help lower those property taxes. So given that they're not giving us any of those funds, and then they put the lid on us, is, is kind of, kind of challenging. So we have in, in our legislative platform, that we would like to see the state start funding and putting dollars into these funds. And so Senate Bill 190 is, is a project that grew apparently somewhat out of the Transportation Task Force efforts, and it was recognized that there's a potential grant program that could help local units of government, cities and counties, with project money, utilizing these sources. So instead of, of taking these funds and going to the general fund, they're going to carve off a piece to go to transportation, even though they've already gutted the transportation funds to run the general government of the state. So it's, it's just kind of convoluted, I guess you'd say, and, yeah. So it's, it's, it's one, you know, not to say that the proposed program that they're proposing is, is not a good idea. We think it is. It's just one of those things where, well, if you can afford to give some money out of the general fund to that, why can't you afford to give some money out of the general fund to the original intent? So the big issue that caused all the discussion was that, and, and traditionally, if you're amending a prior statute, then you repeal that old statute. And I think that's the, the repeal language that's in there to repeal both of those funds, I think are common to do whenever you amend those statutes. And so you're, you're, what we wanted to talk about was whether or not you wanted to join that effort in submitting, you know, that your idea is good, but we, we don't agree that you should just repeal those old funds, and, because they'll be, once you do that, they'll be gone. Now, the Senate has approved this measure, but the House has not acted on it in committee. It's, it's potentially conferenceable in the veto session. It's unlikely that it'll get there. The League has, has put it on their dead list. They don't think it's very likely that it'll come out, and so whether or not you want to, to send it in for something that, there is a possibility. So one option you have would be to sign on to it and send it in that you, you don't support it if it, if it does come up as a suggestion, or you could wait until that does come up, if it would come out of, out of, into a conference committee and, and be part of the veto session, and then you could oppose it on that, at that time. So those are some options for you, you know. Obviously, you know, I'm not, we're just looking for some feedback here. If, if you want to participate, we can coordinate getting signatures from everybody. And, and again, the, the desire by the county was, they'd like to get, send in the information that they have to date, and those that have signed on this week, and so, but the veto session doesn't start till after, till May 1st. So there's a lot of options in front of you. Again, you know, normally, we kind of wait till legislation gets further along, where we submit testimony and, and our position on it. So it's kind of looking for some direction from you all as to how you'd like us to do that, whether you're, if you do want to sign up on it, whether you all want to sign it, or traditionally, we, we put the mayor's name on that letter, so feedback on that would be helpful.
I just have a quick question. Let me just follow on. The, the objection I have to 190 is that in the '60s and '70s, both of these funds were authorized to provide funding back to the municipalities. In today's terms, that's worth $3 million a year. So when you look at SB 190, and as Ron said, if you look at Section 3, which is on the bottom of that, it repeals both of those. So in essence, it now says... So, in essence, it now says, well, we've, we haven't given it to you since 2003 and 2004, so we're just going to forget about it. It's no longer available at all. And oh, by the way, if you want money from KDOT, you're going to have to send it in and get it 80/20. So, we lose twice. And it, to me, is a nefarious bill. And I worry that somebody didn't read it. Because when you have to get down to Section 3 and then find out from a, from a lawyer that this is what it means, I, my suspicion is that a lot of people said, well, this is a great way to fund cities for highways and bridges. Unfortunately, the small print says, but you're not getting any ad valorem or you're not getting any city-county revenue sharing. So, anyway, that's.
That's why, that's why my question was, and thank you for iterating that. I guess the wording on the letter, I don't really understand because it almost makes it seem like we just oppose the lines that repeal that, but really inherently, the entire bill, it doesn't really seem like it's a good idea or something that we support. So, why isn't the letter more just saying, we oppose SB 190?
With the 190, if you took the Section 3 out, the continuation of LAVTR and revenue sharing would continue. It's just that this would provide a mechanism for municipalities to go into KDOT to request funding.
So, it turns it, but it turns it into like a grant almost.
Yeah, but I mean, this was part of what they did, except for Section 3. This is part of what they did in the transportation areas.
So, then my question to that is, because I, I did read through the bill, it seems to me, it's very, even if you took out that last part, it's very county-driven.
Yeah.
The, the references to cities is struck out in most of that. And so, can you explain to me how you think that process would work? Is, I mean, I guess is, i- is this really something that would change to help Riley County or how does this benefit the city of Manhattan?
When, when Julie Lorenz came, the Secretary of Transportation, came in last week, Rob, week before last maybe, she came in and had a sit-down with some of us, right after she left KSU, she had a meeting up there. And this was one of the things that was on her platform. So, one of it was some way to adjust for electric cars and hybrids so that you could, since they don't use as much gas, they don't pay fuel tax the same. Oversized vehicles, toll roads. So, in other words, if you build a new road, you ought to tow it, tow it and then, once it's paid, I assume the tolling comes off. And then, the other one was 190. So, a mechanism to get for anybody, municipalities, the cities, the counties, to get into KDOT with a request. If their conditions are satisfied, then it's, it's like a grant. It's the way we used to do it before, but it's on an 80/20.
So, if the, if we take out the part of the repeal of the.
Section 3.
The, the Section 3, then this is just essentially a grant through KDOT. But how is that funded? Where does that money come from?
Well, it comes from the money they're not giving us now.
But that's, but that, I guess that's what I'm struggling with is why don't we just oppose this whole bill and say you should be doing what you agreed to do since 2003?
I think the, the, the feeling of the two counties was that the, the quick way to make sure that people kill this is to hit Section 3. Because, I mean, the practice over the past 15 years has been that all that money is not returned to us and it all goes to the general fund. So, we're probably not going to win that battle.
There's just some sort of words I want to die on.
It's ugly.
Um, okay. I, I, you've convinced me. I, I, I'm comfortable with signing it.
I think this is, you know, when County Commissioner Ron Wells presented it also at the City-City County Meeting as well as the intergovernmental meeting, we had long discussions about this. And you're absolutely right. I mean, we didn't see that last line. I'm sure the people who signed it or who supported this didn't see that last line. And we've been wanting that money for a while and completely negate any of the needs of the communities is irresponsible. So, what Clancy had recommended is if we just get rid of that one line, Section 3, we should be okay with the rest of it. And I think most of us were in consensus with that suggestion. So, yes, I do think, and I don't mind if all of us need to sign it or just the mayor, either way, I'm comfortable with that. But the point being, it does need to show that we are united in this. And I'm glad the USD 383 also was going to sign on to it as well as Potawatomi County and you said they already did. So, I, I think this is the right direction to go with this.
The way I've got it, is it has all of our signature blocks on it. So, if that's consensus, we'll just send it down the table.
Yeah, I, I read all of it and, and it, it makes sense. I mean, we may not get any more money for them, but at least this leaves us the option. And, you know, you know, that chart that showed the 6.5% sales tax that's going there, it's just aggravating. So, so I'm all for it 100%.
It's almost like a shell game or one of those midnight kinds of legislation that you shoot through and nobody reads it, nobody pays attention and you end up with really an unintended consequence. And so, I, and, and quite frankly, I really want us to be able to cooperate with the county, both counties on this. And, and, and the school district, this is a perfect model for that kind of inter-region cooperation. So, I, I'm eager to do that.
All right. I think that is the end of business for tonight. We'll stand adjourned and I'll send this down the table for signature.